It is 5:31. I am now calling this Bastrop, Texas City Council meeting to order. And we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. Do we have Claire and Jacob here? They may not have realized we were starting so early. So Councilperson Meyer, will you lead us in a pledge?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
So now I'm going to invite up Lauren Hansel, Police Chaplain, to give our invocation.
Good evening, everyone.
Father God, we praise you for all your mighty works. You are a loving and good and gracious God, and we thank you for creating us in your image and sustaining us day to day, especially today. You designed us to be in unity and exist in community with other people, and to be family together, showing love. We thank you that your hand is on this city, to know you and to know your ways, and when conflict arises, to seek your face, to understand in a bigger way how to handle the problems, first through you, and then with each other, through desiring the best for one another. We thank everyone who resides in this city that desires for good for our community. Thank you for our elected officials, businesses, churches, ministries, families, and the individuals that make our city a great place to live and be family together. Lord, thank you for our civil government, those who bear the sword. Do so as your men and women of justice, that are warriors to love, protect, uphold, and bring victory to those in need. May they acknowledge this position on bent knee, realizing the responsibility being given, and do it faithfully. May they never neglect or abuse their authority, knowing there will be consequences by your hand. We ask humbly, as we gather today, to discuss the affairs of our city, for your guidance, wisdom, and understanding. May all deliberations be marked by compassion, open-mindedness, and a commitment to the betterment of our community. Grant the council and the pro tem mayor strength to listen attentively to diverse perspectives and make decisions that reflect the needs of our citizens. May the city council and mayor act in unity amongst each other for success for our Bastrop community. May the citizens of our city succinctly voice their concerns with honor and gratitude. May all work together to hear your voice and think more of each other's voice than their own. Tonight, may we humble ourselves to seek you for your words and not our own, and bow before one another to bring about the best for this city. Orchestrate Bastrop to be known strategically as a city that acknowledges you as Lord, that welcomes strangers, that saves, heals, and delivers them from assaults from the enemy of this world, and a city that defends the innocent from evil doers, that does justice heaven's way and not for power or greed, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Thank you very much.
Everyone be seated. Thank you very much, Mrs. Hansel. So we're going to be starting out by going into executive session. I'm going to read these things here. We've got item 4A, "City Council shall convene in a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and Section 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding real estate matters for Mayfest Park and adjacent property along Loop 150 East." Item 4B, "City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a 380 agreement with Chestnut Commercial located at 1712 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas." Item 4C, "City Council shall convene in a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and Section 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate regarding the proposed real estate acquisition of an easement located in the future Agnes Street location." Item 4D, "City Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek consultation with legal counsel regarding the City of Bastrop's charter amendments." And finally, for consultation with attorney, item 11M, "Consider and act on resolution R. 2025-13 ordering a special election to be held on Saturday, May 3, 2025, for the recall of Mayor Lyle Nelson, according to the Bastrop Home Rule Charter." So it is 5:36. Council is in executive session. Well, hello, everybody. We're back from executive session. There will be no action due to the activities in our regular session, in our executive session. And so, we will move on to presentations. We will skip the mayor's report. On council members' reports, I would like to congratulate Councilperson Plunkett, our own Councilperson Plunkett, for being named the Chamber of Commerce Man of the Year. Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Woo, hi, good evening, everybody. I'll be real quick. I just wanted to say thank you to the Lost Pines Toyota for the fabulous Mardi Gras kickoff party on Saturday. Also, thank you to the Bastrop County Historical Society for the unveiling of the Leah Moncur Historical Marker yesterday at 1601 Main Street. It was the first, the first female engineer in Texas is honoring her. So go to 1601 Main Street and check out the brand-new Undertold Historical Marker that's been revealed there. And also Circa is having their 10-year anniversary party celebration this Friday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's the Colorado River Collegiate Academy is having their 10-year anniversary this Friday. Thank you.
Councilperson Plunkett.
No, thanks.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you. Just to make it quick for time's sake, also congratulations, Councilmember Plunkett, Man of the Year, but also to our wonderful city manager, who received the award of distinction from the Chamber of Commerce. So we have two, two winners in the House. Very deserving, both of them. I just want to remind the public, if you don't know, tomorrow, being Wednesday, is a Historical Landmark Commission meeting at 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. One of the agenda items is of concern to the citizens, I know. It is on the House, there's on Con Street, the address is 1005, that has a big demolition sign out front. And I, and thank you so much for voicing your concern to me and council. But you have an opportunity tomorrow night at 6:00, too, at the HLC meeting. So please attend, and we welcome your comments.
Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, Bastrop. Couple of reminders. The 20th Annual Empty Bell Project is scheduled this month, on January 25, from 11:00 to 1:30. So I hope that you guys will visit the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry website to purchase tickets to attend that. Couple of library updates. Discounts for family memberships, veterans, and seniors went into effect on December 2, and that discount can be applied at the time of your renewal. So if you are a library cardholder, and you are a veteran senior or have a family membership, make sure you get that added. Also, the library has added faxing as part of their service, at no charge to the public. They said they have about a person a day come in, so people are utilizing that. And this Saturday, the Friends of the Bastrop Public Library and the Bastrop African American Cultural Center and Freedom Colonies Museum will be hosting a Q&amp;A with Dr. Clementine Sinji. She's an award-winning speaker who survived the Rwandan genocide. She speaks nationally on numerous issues, but she is coming to Bastrop, and I have the honor of introducing her at that event, which will not only highlight her accomplishments in her quest for academic and personal resilience, but her new book, "Spare," which tells the story of her escape from Rwanda. And that event will take place at the library on January 18, this Saturday, from 11:00 to 12:30. So I hope that everyone will come out to that. And I do believe you will need to RSVP seating. I think the seating is limited. So if you're interested in that, please visit the Bastrop Library website. Thank you.
Okay, item 6C, proclamation recognizing January 20, 2025, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Would members of the MLK Committee like to stand while I read the proclamation at the front? Doc Jackson, anybody else here? You can stand at the front, because we'll be having a photo op, Doc. All right. And we will have a change in the program for Monday. I did not use the word canceled in the, in the drive, because it's not canceled, only the walk, because of the frigid temperatures. So all of the activities will continue at the convention center. So, "Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King challenged our nation to recognize that our liberty relies upon our common equality, and whereas at a time when our nation was sharply divided, Dr. King called on a generation of Americans to be the voices of reason, sanity, and understanding amid the voices of violence, hatred, and emotion. And whereas Dr. King devoted his life to the struggle for justice and equality, so in seeds of hope for a day when all of the people might claim the riches of freedom and the security of justice. And whereas on Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday, we commemorate the 39th anniversary of the holiday, recognizing one of America's greatest visionary leaders, and we celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. King. And whereas Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" speech turned 62 in 2025, and reminds us to recognize that in these challenging times, too many Americans face limited opportunities, but our capacity to support each other remains limitless. And whereas we must face the challenges with the same strength, persistence, and determination exhibited by Dr. King. And whereas the American people are called to engage in public service and promote nonviolent social change so that our united, enduring efforts can achieve Dr. King's unfinished movement toward equality. And whereas all citizens are urged to join the 36th Annual Bastrop County Holiday Commission Walk on January 20, 2025, that was supposed to begin at the Paul Quinn African American Episcopal Church, but will now begin at the convention center at 11:00, located right across the street from City Hall on Chestnut, because I don't know the exact address, for universal peace, justice, human rights, and social and economic progress for all people, where the walk's theme continues to be, remember, celebrate, act, a day on, not a day off. And now therefore I, Sylvia Carriot Ravino, City Manager of the City of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby proclaim January 20, 2025, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Thank you.
of us in our effort to continue to strive for freedom, justice, and equality here in Bastrop County. When I founded this 36 years ago, I was really excited to get that going in Bastrop, and we wanted to share it with the rest of our communities. And so, we have expanded it, and it is going to be a scholarship program, as we have continued to do, for the six high schools in Bastrop County. So if you can't come, you are welcome to contribute to our scholarship fund for the six high schools. It's designate which high schools you'd like to donate to, or else if you want to split it up with your donation, that's fine, too. But we really need the funds to keep these kids in school and get them to further their education. And I think you will enjoy the program that we put together for this year. And although we won't get a chance to freeze outside in the cold weather, it'll be nice and warm and everything at the convention center. And so, thank you so much for your support, City of Bastrop, and we look forward to seeing all the rest of you there.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you. So I'm going to move up item 11D. This is the Visit Bastrop Resolution. It says, "Consider and act on resolution R. 2025-06 regarding a Visit Bastrop Destination Marketing Services Agreement between Bastrop and Visit Bastrop, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing city manager to execute all necessary documents, and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice, and meeting." Madam City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This has been the culmination of a very long year of work with Visit Bastrop. Mike Pistana is the new interim CEO at the helm of Visit Bastrop, and he has been a refreshing change to working with the group. As you recall, council charged me with sending on a contract that mirrored the city's policies, both in expenditure for financial purposes, so things like being the signer and the approver weren't allowed anymore, and then also so that the HR policies also mirror the City of Bastrop's. There's some tweaking that still needs to be done on the policies, but overall, 99.9% of the policy is accepted by Visit Bastrop. The other thing that was required by the council is that Visit Bastrop bring forward some measurable performance measures that the council will define as success. And we used to have performance measures that talked about impressions of a webpage, et cetera, et cetera. Mike has brought back some, I think what you're going to find will define success for Visit Bastrop now and in the future, and we can only build on the positives. So, Mike, please, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. Pleasure to be here. Really just wanted to start and thank, little background on myself. I've met most of all of you. I know we just met tonight, Cheryl, but it's a pleasure to meet you. If we can just go to the next slide. Well, I mean, it's just me. But so I'm here, as Sylvia said, as the interim president and CEO of Visit Bastrop. Just to tell you a little background myself, the previous five years, I was up in Denton, Texas, and I was essentially, I was in the CEO role. It was called Executive Director, Vice President there. It was a division of the Chamber of Commerce, so it just had a little different structure. But prior to that, I've been in the hospitality world my whole career, 30 years. I spent 20 years with MGM Resorts out in Las Vegas. I worked a variety of roles out there. Most recently, I was in the corporate offices and the Vice President of Sales Operations. I was the Vice President of Global Luxury Business Sales. Spent some time at the Monte Carlo, which was part of MGM Resorts, as the Vice President of Sales. And prior to that, I worked at Bellagio in an executive role. I had, what brought me to Vegas is I had graduated from the University of North Texas in Denton, Texas, and I had a hotel management degree. So hotels, hospitality, that is, that's everything I've done my whole life. So when this opportunity came about, it was, it was perfect. It's been great. We got a lot of our board members here tonight, and our hotel GMs, and really appreciate the support. We have a list here for the board. Just, we updated lists of our Board of Directors that we do have, and we have, we have most of them here tonight. They couldn't all make it. But Lee Harrell, our chairman, of course, he's here. He's been very supportive. And on the left column there, that's our Executive Committee, Alec Tenley, Amy Bailey, and Heather Young. And then that's the rest of board members and what they represent. And then also, just, back one more there. You know, as, as Visit Bastrop, we have our mission and vision, and just wanted to reiterate that to you guys. Our mission is to promote and develop Bastrop through a targeted destination strategy that drives economic growth and quality of place. And our vision is to champion Bastrop and the Lost Pines region branded experiences, to facilitate local tourism, business development, education, and advocacy. And then this is really just, there's a lot of stuff on there, but I'm going to simplify for this. This is really the work, to explain the work of what a destination marketing organization does, a DMO. This is the community vitality wheel. And what, what this talks about is really the three main components of what we're doing every day. It's promotion and sales, brand management, and destination stewardship. And essentially, the destination stewardship is the continuous pursuit of a positive tourism experience for not only our visitors, but for our residents. Because we all, we all know, and everything we do, it starts with a visit to Bastrop. And the way that all ties together, and this is, this is a way that really outlines how visit, live, work, and invest all ties together. So back to, it starts with a visit, and if you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people want to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where business wants to be. And if you build a place where business wants to be, we'll be back to building a place where people want to visit. It all starts with a visit, and that visit doesn't happen without the team at Visit Bastrop and the mission that we do every day. And... Any questions on, on just that? This is a little background of me and what we do and our board?
Yeah, I have a question. On the metrics you're looking at bringing forward, one of the things that I've had to do for the first time this year is justify my own existence at my own workplace. And the way that they ask us to do that is to put it in dollars and say, how much am I going to save the company or make the company in revenue because of the work that I'm doing? And in 30th year, I guess, of employment now, this is the first time I've ever had to think of it like that. But it's been hard-
Yeah.
-and, and interesting, but getting easier as I do it. And I'm starting to contemplate that for everything that we do, right? So we have this concept of return on investment, and we're putting tax dollars into Visit Bastrop, and then we're going to get something back. And how do we quantify what that is in those same dollars? Like, how would you propose doing that?
Well, there's, there's many ways you look at it, and there's, depending on the community, you know, we're in a really unique situation with the hotel group that we have in that there's 10 hotels, but one of them is such a large component of what contributes to that. I, I've actually done the research. I don't know that I've found a destination, at least in Texas, that it's that much, where 75, 80% of the revenue comes from one hotel. When I was in Denton, we had about 27 hotels, and it was similar. There was one large hotel that was the, the main group hotel, full-service hotel. But there was 26 other hotels, so the balance wasn't near. It was closer to about 30% of their revenue was. So, little bit different. So, really, we just, and Irby is here, the GM of the Hyatt, which is great. So we, we've been collaborating a lot more, but, you know, we're, we're going to start looking at things which are, you know, like they said, we had talked about website traffic and stuff. That's one thing. We've, we've just recently invested in some new software. It's called the Website Impact Calculator, and it's a tool through tourism economics that we're going to be able to now start looking at tracking any campaign we do, whether it's digitally and people, you know, so social media is a big way we promote the market, promote market of the destination, go into our website or whatnot through Google. We place ads. So when people now will click on an ad or a link and come to our website, we now have a pixel embedded into the, into the website, and we're going to be able to track that, that visitor. Not only they saw the ad and got to our website, but it's the next step. It's, did they come back and take a visit to Bastrop? And so that is a new tool we just invested in. It's going to take about 90 to 120 days of data of getting people to the website, and then being, and understand them, what they're doing, and are they actually. So as a result of the, the advertising and marketing that we are doing, when they do come to our website, are they just coming to the website to look around, or do they eventually come back? So that's a new technology, not a new technology, but it's a, it's an investment for us. So that's going to be one way we're going to be able to start measuring that performance. You know, in a lot of destinations, it's typically you are just looking at the hotel taxes. And, you know, with everything everyone's doing, if, if occupancy is up, revenues are up, there's more hotel tax coming in. I mean, that's kind of a simple calculation. Is 100% of that because of what Visit Bastrop does? Of course not. There's no way to quantify it to the, you know, to the penny that way. But, you know, I always tell people, I can assure you, if the destination marketing organization goes, goes, goes away in any city, you're going to see an impact, and all the hoteliers would tell you that. So.
Council, any questions? Councilperson Plunkett?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, I was on that board for quite a while from the beginning, and I, I do understand the, the challenge in trying to put, you know, numbers to it. And, but I'd just like to offer any help, you know, that I can, and, and helping to, to come up with metrics like that. And, because it is, it's always been something that's near and dear to my heart. I know it is for your current chair as well. And, and like I said, just wanted to offer any assistance.
I really appreciate that.
And welcome.
Yeah, everyone's been so helpful and welcoming for me. So I've been here now a couple of months, and so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm really impressed with the direction the board's headed. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? So, we have before us a resolution, and Madam City Manager, in this resolution, there is a contract that lays out the agreement with Visit Bastrop. There was one thing in there that we had talked about, you and I, in our one-on-ones, and it has to do with the use of funds, and that the public dollars should not be used for gifts. And I didn't see that anywhere in here. Is that captured indirectly some other way, or?
No, I would request an amendment on the floor, and Mike and I did talk about that. Just for the audience edification, Visit Bastrop has two funds. They have a fund that is completely funded with hotel occupancy tax, i.e. public funds. And then they have another fund that is through the sale of merchandise, et cetera, that is considered a private fund. If they needed to entertain a client or needed to, say, purchase alcohol on said, from said pot of money, that would be exempt from the city's financial policy, because those are not, quote unquote, "public funds."
Right. Counsel, motion?
All right, I will move to approve with the, what was it, the stipulation that public funds will also not be used-
For gifts.
For gifts, as well as alcohol or whatever. So just add the word "gifts" when it describes the other prohibited items.
Motion from Councilperson Plunkett.
Second.
Second from Councilperson Fosser. Are there any comments or discussion? Madam City Secretary, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, in the interest of time, may I suggest that we table the work session briefing on the city's use of legal to the next meeting, please?
Certainly, we can pull that.
And then I will delay my presentation for citizen comments, if that's so allowed. Also, we have a room full of folks.
Agreed. I was thinking the same thing.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're now going to move to citizens' comments. We have a number of those here in front of me. I have sorted through them, but this is also my first time doing it. So hopefully, I got them all. So first thing I did was divide these up into piles of those that wish to speak and those that didn't wish to speak. So I'm going to read from the ones that did not wish to speak first, and just move that one out of the way. So we have a comment from Cheryl Long. She says she does not wish to speak. Comment from Elaine Weiss, she does not wish to speak. From Bill Hanson, does not wish to speak. Catherine and Larry Albers, does not wish to speak. Stephanie Jenkins, does not wish to speak. Tim McShane, does not wish to speak. And all of these are in regards to building items that have to do with the 1005 Pecan Street home. So now, I'm going to pull up the citizen comment cards, and this one is Susan Long wishing to speak.
My teeth are chattering.
That's okay, mine are, too.
and moved here from Houston, even though they were both country people. They were living in Houston and working in Houston. But they moved here as soon as they could. They moved into a home that was built in 1846. It had no electricity, it had no running water. It just had the house, which they had the foresight to see what an incredible gift had landed in their laps. And I, too, have been able to understand the gift that in Bass Drop, we have these wonderful historic homes. Some are embellished, some are not. It makes no difference, they're all special. This is one of the most important things attraction-wise to the Bass Drop area is our historic homes. So, anyway, we have in place ways to protect these homes, but we need citizens. That's all of you in the audience over here, all of you in the audience over here. Everyone that you know, your neighbors, keep your eyes open for historical sites. They don't have to be embellished with anything, they just have to be old, and they're going to have background attached to them, believe me. One of the things also that's very special about these historic homes, they all had land attached for their animals. And you could have goats and chickens, and my neighbors now have chickens. I love them, I watch them out my kitchen window every day. And I just think the city is so ahead of themselves, yay, that they understand how the important these farm lots are. Now, to the protection of everything, there are people that want to destroy things because they want to make money, and they don't care if they destroy part of the history of Bass Drop. So it is our job to protect what's important. In our historical homes, no matter how humble they are or how embellished they are, they're all important. We have got to protect our historic neighborhoods, we have got to protect our history. We're very unique, and we're getting more unique as time moves on because we're saving these sites, we're protecting them. I mean, when I saw that, whatever you call that thing that just eats up buildings and destroys everything, I mean, I bet I like went into panic mode. First thing I did was run up to the front steps to see if there was a permit. Guess what? No permit for that big honking machine that's going to destroy that house. Of course, got hold the city manager. Anyway, lots of things have happened, and we've saved that house. But what I want to impress on everybody that's here tonight, and please share with all your friends, family, neighbors, everybody needs to keep a sharp eye out for these historic sites. They can be very humble, they don't have to be embellished.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Protect.
Thank you.
Protect.
Christian Palacios, is that right?
Yes.
So, I forgot to ask this of Ms. Long, but she lives at 1402 Hill Street, so state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, it will do. My name is Christian Palacios, I am a field representative from Congressman Michael Cloud. I am 120 South Main Street, Victoria, Texas, 77904. I come to you today to kind of reintroduce myself again. I know it's been some time since I last seen you all, and kind of just re- reminds you kindly of what Congressman Cloud's office can do for you. So for the city-wise, if you're working on any grants, we can also help with letters of support or any way we can do, you know, be a part of this great city of Bass Drop, we would love to be that. For the great people here of Bass Drop, talking to the constituents here, if you're running into any issues with the government agency, IRS, if you're a veteran who's dealing with problems with the VA, we can definitely help on that as well. So, just know, those are great things that we can do. I know sometimes that word doesn't get out. It doesn't matter which side you sit on, left or right, we're willing to help, we're willing, and that's our job to do that. I guess the last thing I kind of want to mention again is, if there's anything we can do to help out or just be, you know, a part of Bass Drop, we would love to do that. So, thank you for your time. I know I can't stay for the full meeting, but I do appreciate all you do, and thank you again kindly. Have a great day.
Thank you, Christian. Thank you very much. You threw me there for in a second when it said Main Street. I was thinking, oh, he's one of my neighbors, but no, it's Victoria, wrong city. Sahila Casper?
Thank you, counsel. My name is Salem Wata Casper, and I'm a resident at 703 Farm Street.
Thank you.
So I come to you today to speak in regard to the matter at hand of 1005 Pecan Street. So not only am I a constituent here in Bass Drop, but I'm also a licensed historic preservationist and have lived in this wonderful city for about the last three years. I work at the national, federal, state, and local levels with partners throughout the country, helping with such things. So today I come speaking as both a professional and a constituent. I really just wanted to urge upon you all just to pause, take a moment, and really think about a lot of the updates to the building codes. Since I have been here, there have been numerous times that this has come up, and I think that it's just so invigorating and very exciting to see so many constituents behind me speaking on historic preservation, because this never happens. So I just see it as a wonderful opportunity here for us, just to pause and review and revise our city codes as it pertains to our historic districts, our historic resources and homes, whether, as it was said previously, whether it's something that is more vernacular, something that was built by a working-class individual, or something that's more grander that you would see on our Main Street. So there are a few key points that I want to give to you in the next minute and 40 seconds. Is that Pecan Street is one of the most beautiful historic streets in all of downtown. It's perfectly preserved, it's what we call in historic preservation, that it holds high integrity, meaning that it is still in its original state, and we are starting from such a wonderful and beautiful place with that. And so adding this proposed development will help to disturb that charming feel that we all love when we're walking our dogs or riding our bikes down Pecan Street. It is absolutely the very first street that I take all of my historic preservation friends to. I go there, wish we could buy there. In 1978, Bass Drop actually submitted one of the largest National Register of Historic Places nominations for a multi-property district. This is something that's boasted at the federal level. I did not know this until Carol Scholl let me know when I met her at a professional level at a different place, very far away from here, but it is something that is so big. So as we continue to think about development, I just want you to know that we are a case study. And Bass Drop, Texas, has actually spoken at the National Preservation Conference every single year. Somebody brings us up as a city to look up to. The other thing that I wanted to share is that a four, four-building, two-story condo would really, I would call it an improper infill. And whenever you're looking at the sightlines from the street, and you're looking at Pecan Street, it's going to be an eyesore. Not only that, because we also have the gas station that's there on Chestnut Street, but if one is coming in, as we were talking previously with the Visit Bass Drop, as a heritage tourist coming in to see our Main Street, that I view that you're coming down Chestnut, one of our busiest streets, is really going to stick out. And that's even like further exaggerated because we also have a stoplight that's there, so that street viewscape will be forever gone. And I'm just going to provide one other thing. So it's definitely going to impact our heritage tourism visitor experience, so would urge us to do that. And would really, really want to share that there are lots of funding opportunities. If it's a matter of funding, I can help connect us to multiple funding opportunities for planning documents such as this.
Thank you, Ms. Casper.
They're very easy to get because we want?
Ms. Casper?
Yes, places like this to be preserved. So, one other thing, once it's gone, it's gone.
Thank you, Ms. Casper.
Thank you.
Mr. Pablo Serna?
Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street, Bass Drop, Texas. And so I, too, come as a citizen and professional. I'm the deputy chief architect with the Texas Historical Commission. I do historic preservation instructors every day. I wanted to give you some background on the efforts to preserve the historic characteristics of Bass Drop's older neighborhoods through the regulations found in the B3 Land Development Code adopted in 2019. As a citizen who participated in the code development starting in 2017, we recognized that Bass Drop was facing increased development. All of this was an older code that did not consider the various differences around town, older parts and newer parts of town. On top of that, we needed to, we needed a new land development code to catch up with the recently adopted 2016-2036 Bass Drop Comprehensive Plan. So one of the core issues that we took to heart was the importance of not losing the historic character of Bass Drop that is home to more than 130 homes and buildings, many of which are listed in the National Register of Historic Places. It was with this in mind that we rallied behind the purpose statement that reads, "Create a fiscally sustainable community through land use standards that are authentically Bass Drop and geographically sensitive." We understood authentic land development to be defined, first through the farm blocks found in the older parts of Bass Drop, also known as the Eirdel Historic District, then the connectivity of the street grid, and last, the implementation of traditional neighborhood and village center development patterns sprinkled throughout. These areas that were developed with these patterns have demonstrated to be some of the most desirable and enduring parts of Bass Drop. It was our intention to base newer developments with these traditional patterns in mind in order to have a more cohesive future growth. New developments would incorporate aspects of traditional neighborhoods, such as the public-private street edge, the implementation of sidewalks, trees, site lighting for improved walkability, and most notably, infill lot development would be patterned after the traditional neighborhood pattern as described in Chapter 6, Private Realm Development, that's also known as the Lot Structure Diagram. Well, this is where I think things have not worked out as planned. So maybe it was too much to expect newer development to follow older development patterns. So after meeting with the city manager and planning staff, I agree with their effort to reset this vision for one that is more orderly for the grove, for the good of all Bass Drop. It's become a contentious issue to try to keep pushing that, that vision, unfortunately. What I do hope is that you keep this backstory in mind as to why the B3 code is so different than other land development codes around Texas, because it is one of a kind. The B3 code was the first land development code in Texas to shape future development with historic development patterns, and it has won a number of awards, American Planner Association, and Congress on Urbanism. If I could say one more thing, we have a structure, the Old Casino, that has already, and it's fallen down, and it needs, it needs help, so we need, we need a champion. One of y'all needs to step up and help us preserve Bass Drop.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. Next is William Holford.
Will Holford, 1308 Pecan Street. Thank you very much for the opportunity regarding the property at 1005 Pecan Street. I'm opposed to the demolition of single-family residences in this neighborhood at the, for the purpose of development of high-density multifamily residences. Certainly, that's a property that needs to be improved and a structure that needs to be either preserved or if not possible, then replaced, but not with, not at the expense of the, of the character of the neighborhood. So I would suggest that right now, I know there's been some discussion about whether or not B3 is the right fit for the city, or if it's going to be replaced, amended, but I would suggest that we put a moratorium on any, any new development until that's, that's been done and we get a, a code or a development plan that, that works better for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holford. Sam Callaham?
Mayor Protem and council members, my name is Sam Callaham, and I have cedar fever. And I thank you for your opportunity to address the city council and register a protest against the pending demolition of the vintage Bass Drop home at 1005 Pecan Street and the proposed zoning change and planning development thereafter. Roughly 27 years ago, my family and I moved into our home at 1009 Pecan, which is located at the southeast corner of Spring and Pecan Street. At the time we moved to Bass Drop, the northeast corner of Chestnut and Pecan consisted of a small two-pumper gas station. Soon after our arrival, the same small two-pumper gas station, which is currently a Shell station, was allowed to expand to its current size, which is a 14-gas pump underground with underground storage tanks, large overhead canopy, and convenience store that is flanked by a freestanding commercial building with separate retail businesses, all sandwiched onto a parcel measuring 100 feet by 150 feet of land area. In my opinion, the Bass Drop City Council that approved this extreme expansion of the filling station was derelict in its decision and should have never granted approval. Not derelict in allowing the filling station to expand at Chestnut and Pecan, but rather derelict in allowing such an extreme expansion. It is my understanding that a Lakeway resident has recently applied for a demolition permit to demolish the vintage home at 1005 Pecan Street. 1005 Pecan Street is located immediately adjacent to and just north of the Shell station. Likewise, 1005 Pecan Street is located immediately adjacent to and just south of our home at 1009 Pecan. Further, 1005 Pecan is located immediately adjacent to and just west of a land parcel that my wife and I own that fronts on Spring Street. In other words, our property shares two common lines, property lines, with 1005 Pecan. 1005 Pecan Street currently carries residential zoning, as does our property. It is my understanding that if the vintage home at 1005 Pecan Street is demolished, the Lakeway resident intends to apply for a P4 zoning and develop a series of duplexes, property as many as four duplexes, at 1005 Pecan Street. While developing 1005 Pecan with one or two condo units or one or two townhomes would be considered a reasonable transition to buffer the neighborhood from the Shell station, it is our position that allowing the Lakeway resident to develop a series of duplexes at 1005 Pecan would be excessive, extreme, and in the same manner as the current size of the Shell station.
Thank you, Mr. Callaham. Three minutes are finished.
I've got one more paragraph, if that's okay.
Could you shorten it to a sentence, summarize?
No, that's all right.
Okay, thank you, sir. So those are the citizen comments that I have, both that wanted to speak and didn't want to speak. Is there anybody else that we missed? Okay, thank you very much. So now we're going to go to item 8A, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Trying to get there on my own. Well, it's been a busy, been a busy last quarter, beginning of the first quarter. First, I wanted to give the council an update and the residents an update on the water wells. It was supposed to be a wonderful Christmas present to the residents. We had some delays. Those are due to come online February the 6th. The bridge is at design. We submitted to the Texas Historical Commission. They must review before the Army Corps of Engineers reviews. The Texas Historical Commission denied our review for the railing and the lights. We are discussing a resubmital or what perhaps that designation actually means, since the city's not receiving any funding from any outside source. We will submit that for re-review. We will submit that for re-review. Agnes Street, we're still trying to work out a ribbon cutting for, for, please get with Victoria so that we can manage a schedule. The council policy on travel is still an ongoing draft. There's a document to submit on the council members who have already requested travel. I will submit that, but that is something that we need to discuss and it'll be on your next agenda item. The short-term rental, the Public Input Meeting, is January 22nd. It'll be at the Convention Center. We have been discussing short-term rentals since the summer with PNZ and the concern about their proliferation and how do we, number one, regulate, or do we have the ability to regulate, and how do we know who's in our midst and who's actually paying their hotel occupancy tax? B3, that's a, that's a topic of conversation. We've been through various code iterations. Tonight, you are talking impervious cover. That's a reduction to mitigate our flood risk. We are talking about additional dwelling units, also reducing the number allowed by right unless certain things are met, i.e., infrastructure such as you can meet your impervious cover, you have your water, your sewer, and you can most definitely meet your parking requirements. And that really is, again, to keep the integrity of the residential neighborhoods. Parking, I hear about parking weekly, about parking spilling out onto the street, making it difficult to have our first responders respond, but also those bikers and walkers trying to walk through the cars. And so tonight's recommendation is an increase in parking ratios that would hopefully push all of that parking off the street and onto private property. Future updates, as we talk through lot size minimums and setbacks. The item that was discussed earlier today in citizens' comments about Pecan Street, our current code under the B3 has no lot size minimums. And so as we've been saying for the last couple of years, that is a developer's dream. And while the intention, and I agree with Ms. Serna, I think the intention to create a more historic-looking area in aesthetic quality ended us with a code that does anything but that. We have to revisit it in very key, critical areas. Otherwise, what is happening at Pecan is a proliferation and will happen in other areas of the city where perhaps we didn't want to see them or who don't have protections. For example, Riverside Grove has an HOA, Piney Creek Bend has an HOA, Pecan Park has an HOA. They're not facing these kinds of intrusive construction. Old Town of Bastrop, the very thing that makes Bastrop Bastrop is under this code. So we do need to get started really quickly. Somebody mentioned a moratorium. We've had discussions about that. The process to get through that is lengthy and complicated and very divisive, and I think the better is to work with Planning Commission and the council, starting with this Thursday's Planning and Zoning meeting on how we get there. But lot size minimums and setbacks, absolutely key critical. On the 28th, you'll also see your year in review. Everything we did in 2024 will come up in another prezi presentation. I have had some conversations with residents about refuse and recycling collections in the downtown. Apparently, our staff was converting from recycled trash to some just trash and some recycle. We didn't quite change the lids and so some residents, and Councilmember Meyer, who's in the downtown frequently, said we have folks throwing trash away in the recycle side because there's only one trash bag. And that is true. We're morphing our trash cans to be an alternate trash and recycle. We have a greater use of need for the refuse portion, and we have some recycling education to do clearly in the downtown area. Additional public meetings regarding the Comprehensive Plan. Thursday's meeting with Half &amp; Associates, we did send back Half &amp; Associates to add some additional public meetings. That bill came out at over $16,000. So what we negotiated with Half was they would produce what is called a meeting in a box and allow staff to go out and introduce into the public, similar to what we did with the Parks Master Plan. It's really staff out in the open. So we have a meeting on January 23rd and we have a meeting on January 29th. The, many of you have already spoken about the unveiling of the historical marker. That will be the Historic Commission's quarterly presentation at the museum, so if you get a chance to catch that, please do so. And I'm not sure if Becky's in the audience after all. Is Dory in the audience? Okay. So Dory Kelly is our newest addition to the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. The Chamber had submitted for the Governor's Small Business Summit, which is, the governor selects 12 cities across the state to host a regional summit. Dory applied again, and in conjunction with the Chamber, we were awarded the Small Business Summit. And so our next step is to request attendance by Governor Abbott. And I'm going to ask Christian, who I'm going to put on the spot right now, to have our congressmen and any other dignitaries also. The next item, as it relates to BEDC, and this is LNS Electric, which is in the industrial park, is a Korean manufacturing company who went from three to 30, very high-paying engineering jobs in the industrial park, and continues to expand. They will have some dignitaries from Korea here at their ribbon cutting very soon, and that is also, an invitation has also been extended to the governor to attend the ribbon cutting, and we will extend the invitation to council and EDC directors as that comes through. And the same for the other businesses that are breaking ground in the industrial park. So we've been busy. Any questions?
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, my question, Sylvia, is on the B3 codes, the lot size minimum and the setbacks, because the other amendments that we're working on, I've been here 20 months and I've had 20 months of us working on it. Not, not to your fault at all, Sylvia. There've been delay tactics that have been done, and today we're ended up with Pecan Street, which we're concerned about. So my question is, how expedited can we make the amendments to the setbacks and the lot size minimums? What does that process look like?
Eight weeks.
Okay.
At a, at a, at the most expedited, and that is because what we are discussing with legal is a combination of things. And I think Mr. Serna has come on board in at least understanding that in order to protect the integrity of a particular neighborhood, you need to take that neighborhood into account. What did, what did those lot sizes look like in that? And if you recall, over the summer, we did the lot size exemption, well, not lot size, but setback exemption. And so it's a similar concept. If, if you were trying to build something here that looks like the rest of your neighborhood but doesn't look like the B3, you should be able to build that. So it's along that same process. We're contemplating that. We're contemplating an overlay district, and then we're contemplating reversion back to a former fashion of what was the downtown form-based code, which had a lot of these components in place. What gets sticky in that part is the architectural requirements, because aesthetics and certified local government. So there's some sticky pieces, but at the most expedited, it's about eight weeks.
Great. So I appreciate that, and please hold our feet to the fire on that. And, and citizens, please hold our feet to the fire on that, because we've got to get this done.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we're moving on to item 8B, updates on the Bastrop County Master Gardeners Community Garden Memorandum of Understanding and Proposed Plans.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to highlight some of the cool work that's happening in our community through partnerships with the Bastrop Master Gardeners. Don't know if you know it or not, but the park at Bob Bryant Park, that garden out there is 100% built, maintained, and handled by the master gardeners. And they're doing some great work out there. They, they, they do teaching classes. They have a class every year that creates new master gardeners. They're called interns, and they teach that for a season, and then they come back and they teach others. That's what we're going for, right? We want our kids to learn what gardens are for. It's amazing that, that we have gotten to a point where some don't, but that's what the good work is. Another thing that the master gardeners are doing in our community, the pots, the, the, the big concrete pots that are in the downtown, our master gardeners maintain water and take care of that. They even go as far as to coordinate with the businesses to help water them. So they are, they're dedicated. They do that work. One other thing I want to bring to your attention is the flowerbed that's up here in the front. Our master gardeners did that project as part of our Mayor Monarch Challenge, and we have finished the 24-year. We're getting ready to reapply for 25 because we've met some of those objectives, like we brought monarch butterfly weed back into some of the gardens. It's out there. If you haven't had a chance to just kind of go through, it's kind of frostbitten right now, but it, it'll come back. And that's the cool thing. They are also teaching our staff how to maintain some of those native plants. You'll start seeing around City Hall with direction from our master gardeners, some changes in the landscape, like adding some of the native grasses and that kind of thing that's better for our community, less water and that type of thing, and replacing some of the rose bushes and things like that that we have in the community. The thing that I really want to bring to your attention today is that we do have operating MOUs with this, with the Bastrop Master Gardener Organization. Y'all stop it. And so, but one of the things that they're about to do, like I said, they are responsible for maintaining those, those gardens, and it is right at the entrance of our park. It's amazing the number of people that go through there and compliment on just that entryway. They have, they have located a new shed that they keep all their supplies in, and now they're wanting to install a fence that goes around that shed so they can maintain all of the mulch and the compost out of the eye of the public. They have some great compost bins there that are just really fantastic. They do some really fun work. They're also going to take the power that's there to the fitness unit. They want to take that power, run it to the shed, so now they can, you know, you have electricity for whether it's a refrigerator that they need to keep water cold for in the summer, or charging up batteries or things like that. I really wanted to just bring to your attention really, the really cool work that they're doing, and they're doing it all in partnership. The amount of money that they save our community to help bring this life to our community is, is just outstanding. So really, the purpose is to bring attention to the partnership and to garner continued support for our work with the Bastrop Master Gardeners.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Oh, I didn't even show you the pretty pictures, but there they are.
We did the work for you. We did the work for you, Terry.
Item C, receive a presentation on the unaudited financial statement as of September
Hi. Okay, so we are catching up with member financial statements. You'll see here that we are, we ended the year in with, in a positive area in all except for three areas. One is general government projects, and those are projects that were funded by the EDC, and we just didn't get as far along, so the money was not, was not transferred over. The other is impact fees, and we have talked about that extensively, but these, we did collect more fees in the last two months of the year, so that variance is not as big as it, as it was. And then the Bastrop EDC, we were down a little bit on sales tax. That had been adjusted mid-year for the reduction, and it just came in a little under budget, which it did not affect overall. Expenses, we ended with positive variances in everything except for our bond issuance, our, our bond monies, which we spent prior year funds, and we did issue the 2024 bond series, bond series that covered some of these expenses. The sales tax revenue, we were under budget by two point, by almost 3%, but we were actually 4.1% more, we collected 4.1% more than 2023. Sorry, my years are just, so we, we were not in a bad position. We just didn't hit forecast. Property tax revenue was, is spot on as, as of the end of fiscal year 2024. General fund expenditures, in total, we were under forecast by 90, almost 90, we were at about 97% of expenses spent. Water, wastewater, we were at about, we were within 2.5% of expenditures budgeted. We spent just a little bit more than we, or revenues, I'm sorry. Those are the revenues. We were just under our collective revenues. And then our expenditures were right at 2%, so we were even at the end of the year. Our electric service revenues were up 21%. Sorry, that was a wrong slide. Did I go too far? Okay, development services, we were up 21%. This was the first year that we budgeted for development services, and so in 2025, we should be closer to actual. Sorry, my slides that I have here are out of order.
Go ahead, council.
For that development services slide, like part of the word, if there was a spike in something, I was just interested to see what that was, if you could go back.
Down, oh, sure.
Yeah. There was a spike in, see that final sentence of the?
Oh, at, in, in August and September, there was a spike in revenues in, which?
Oh, it does smell like fire.
We smell smoke in here. Yeah, we're going to take a recess immediately. Thank you. At 7:49.
Just going to do a quick safety check.
So for the public, just to let you know what happened, we suddenly smelled a very strong smell of smoke in the building, and so we, everything is okay. Let's just get to that, which I guess is obvious because of the fact that we're back. But it smelled strongly of smoke, so we all just, you know, walked 50 feet in, to the outside, evacuated. And we didn't even have to have a drill, and we all pulled that off. Congratulations, everyone. We're all adults. I mean, that's pretty cool. But it turns out they replaced some heating strips in the air conditioners today, so those may have just come on for the first time and burned off some oil, and, and here we are. But the fire department came and checked for hot spots with their little infrared camera, and everything looks okay. So we're going to keep going. So the floor is yours again. Thank you.
Okay, the spike in development services revenue is from permit fees that were collected in August and September and inspections that were done for Bastrop ISD. Our development services expenditures are actually about 20% less than forecast. This, again, was our first year to budget these, and so they'll, it'll be closer for fiscal year '25. Our fiscal year '24 attorney fees, this is the list, we ended at $572,000 of attorney fees. I will say that in the, the slides, we're missing the electric fund. We, BP&amp;L, we were over in our revenues and under in our expenses. And our hotel occupancy tax, if you recall, we had reduced the, we had a budget amendment to reduce the amount of revenue. Well, we did collect more than we, than our adjusted budget, but it was still significantly less than we had originally budgeted. So we are in a, in a good position for hot tax fund, and their expenses were about 15% less than budgeted, so.
So is that it?
That's it.
Excellent. Any questions from council? Okay, thank you very much. So we have already done citizens' comments, so number 10 is Consent Agenda. There are two items that have been, well, goodness, I think we're probably at about four items total to be removed from the consent agenda. So are you ready to write these down? Okay. So 10D, 10F, and 10G. And councilperson Lee.
Also 10C, 10H, and 10I.
Oh.
So CB.
So C, B, CDF, GH, and I.
DFG, and then the three you said?
CH and I.
Do you have those marked down now? Perfect. Okay, well, go ahead.
The consent, the consent agenda. Consider an act to approve the following Bastrop City Council meeting minutes. One, Tuesday, December 2024, regular meeting. And two, Tuesday, December 17, 2024, special meeting. Item 10B, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-45, amending Chapter 13, Article 13.02, Section 13.02.012, providing for line extension agreements for the extension of certain water and/or wastewater lines, and providing for findings of fact, repealer severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 10E, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-48, amending the code of ordinances related to Chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Technical Manual, Article 2.1, General Standards and Requirements, Section 2.1.006, Parking Areas A1, as attached in Exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, repealer severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 10J, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2025-04 regarding an interlocal agreement with Bastrop County for the Bastrop County Household Hazardous Waste Facility operation and maintenance obligations between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for findings of fact, repealer severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 10K, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2025-01 regarding the amended and restated tri-party agreement for future connections in the Colony Project to off-site roadways, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for facts, providing for findings of fact, repealer severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 10L, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2025-03 approving a request to refund a repla, application fee in the amount of $1,986.29 and to refund the board commission appeal application fee in the amount of $3,681.01 for the property located at 112 Post Oak Rim, Bastrop, Texas, within the city limits of Bastrop, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 10M, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2025-02 approving an interlocal agreement for road improvements with Bastrop County Water Control and Improvement District Number Two, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the execution of all necessary documents, providing for repeal and providing for an effective date. Item 10N, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2025-09 ordering a general election to be held on Saturday, May 3, 2025, for council member place one and place five, according to the Bastrop Home Rule Charter, designating polling places within the city, establishing other procedures for the conduct of the general election and runoff election if necessary, including providing that the election is to be held as a joint election in conjunction with Bastrop County, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Item 10O, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2025-11 approving the contract with the Bastrop County Election Administrator to participate in a joint election for the May general election called and ordered for Saturday, May 3, 2025, authorizing the city manager to sign said contract agreement, providing for repealing clause, severability, and effective date. Item 10P, consider an act to approve Resolution Number R-2025-12, a resolution updating Resolution Number R-2024-180, accepting donations for the Texas Municipal League Region 10 quarterly meeting hosted by the City of Bastrop, ratifying a new grand total in the amount of $2,440.01, authorizing staff to provide all donors with an official donation receipt acceptable to the International Revenue Service to claim a charitable donation, providing for a repealing clause and establishing effective date. That is the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion, counsel?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, call the roll, please.
Counselor member Lee?
Yes.
Counselor member Plunkett?
Yes.
Counselor member Meyer?
Yes.
Counselor member Fosler?
Yes.
Unanimous. So now we will go back. Lots of pages today. So 10C, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance 2024-46, amending the code of ordinances relating to Chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 6.3, General Lot Standards, alleys and driveway locations. We'll go with that.
Good evening, Mayor Portobin, counsel. So this item was brought up last meeting, essentially specifying the location for the driveways.
Counselperson Lee, did you have a question or?
I actually pulled this item for someone in the audience who wanted to speak on the item, Pablo Serna, on this item, 10C and 10G. So I wanted to give him the opportunity to do so off consent.
So I have comments for 10D and 10G, and that's why I pulled those. I didn't have one for 10C.
I missed it. I'm sorry.
So did you want to?
I was sort of insistent, but I wanted to add clarification.
Can he still do so?
If he wishes to, citizen comments, certainly.
Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street. I'm in support of this as written. I think the background that I wanted to give and I alluded to in my general comments, citizen comments, was that that pattern, that alley, was kind of a traditional more, you know, before we had front loading garages and attached garages, the idea was that parking came from the rear. And that was, again, one of those historic patterns that we were trying to use as, you know, throughout some of the newer developments. And so I agree with Sylvia's and her staff. They kind of, you know, that's maybe pushing things too much. If you wanted to change something, we do have, you know, the districts, the Old Town, downtown and cultural arts districts could be exempt from that because there's, that's where you see that kind of pattern. So that was all. But I agree with Sylvia.
Right, you know, because we're talking about agenda items, we can, you know, interact, right? But these represent the rules for new development in effect. I mean, certainly infill as well, but for things that you have to go and get permits to do, not something that, you know, exists in a existing house. I think we kind of consider that alleyway development would always be allowed, but we're not going to force it in effect was.
Agree, and I think that's the change, that I think that I'm trying to relate that in a way that that vision was, we're going to take these older pattern, traditional neighborhood patterns and patterns of development and require newer development to follow that. And I think that's where we're finding the problem.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Counselperson Meyer and counselperson Plunkett?
Counselor?
Okay, go ahead and call the roll. We're wondering if Sylvia wanted to say something.
I did, but it's related to the next one.
Counselor member Meyer?
Yes.
Counselor member Plunkett?
Yes.
Counselor member Lee?
Yes.
Counselor member Fosler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. On to 10D, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance 24-47, amending the code of ordinances related to Chapter 14 of the B3 Code, Article 6.3, General Lot Standards, parking as attached in Exhibit A. So this one, we had a citizen's comment on Pablo Serna. Would you like to speak?
Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street. And I oppose to this as written because it is indicating one parking space per bedroom. And I wanted to make a point that the, I just checked real quick, our international building code, which only provides a standard, a go-by, sorry, say again. So the international building code, which only provides a standard, the cities can override parking regulation, actually states two per dwelling unit. So using that as a basis, it was my recommendation, and P&amp;Z passed at eight to zero, two parking spaces per primary dwelling unit, I inserted the word primary, and one parking space per accessory dwelling unit. Wanted to do that because I think we are going to have ADU discussion, and we can start to regulate using those terms. So that was my recommendation to read. Thank you.
So on this particular item, the concept of using the bedroom as a delimeter was something that I had inserted in the conversation, and I still feel like two per primary dwelling unit is not enough. Where you end up, if you look at our existing neighborhoods. As you look at our existing neighborhoods, things like Hunter's Crossing, Riverside Grove, and you walk amongst those streets, and the vast numbers of cars that are on the roads is quite significant. And so I kind of was looking for something that was more than two per dwelling unit and trying to identify a, I don't know, a medium that says that, you know, we have enough. I mean, the bottom line is, I'd like to have enough parking space for the cars that belong to that house to fit on their lot so that they're not parking in front of the neighbors. That's kind of what this is going after. There was some discussion on bedrooms maybe not being a good standard because of definitions of bedrooms and, you know, what does a realtor call a bedroom versus what does a builder call a bedroom and so on. The building code that our city staff works off of, though, bedroom is defined concept, and so we shouldn't have any difficulty there, is what Sylvia has told me today. Counselperson Plunkett?
Yeah, I agree with you that it, Kennedy, do you have any insight as to, or any suggestions on a, you see where we're trying to go. We're trying to avoid the neighborhoods where you have to drive in a serpentine pattern to get through it and, you know, never shall two cars pass, you know, other than unless one is parked in front of a driveway while the other one comes by. So, you know, I'm open to suggestions of a better way of doing it, for sure. But I do feel like, and I also understand that, you know, the current neighborhoods, that it's a problem, you know, the horse is out of the barn. But, you know, we're trying to fix this for future neighborhoods primarily. And so if you have a, if you know of a city that's doing it a better way, I'd love to hear it. I think Mr. Serna says he has one, but.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Come to the mic.
I don't know of a city, off the top of my head, that has a great parking regulation.
You won't find many. As I stated, residential, not commercial, is usually regulated with dwelling units. So I think if you're interested in increasing that number, I would stick with maybe three or four per dwelling unit, but don't use the bedroom as part of your language.
But why?
Because a bedroom, again, I know the IBC kind of defines that, but people will, there's ways to get around that. And so even towns that I've done architectural projects around the state, they all go by dwelling unit. So I'm just trying to keep Bastrop in that realm. If, and your point's well taken, the streets, and that's probably more to do with the width of the street and the fact that people, you know, the setback is maybe only 20 feet, so a duly sticking out in the sidewalk. So setbacks, wider streets, that's how you address that. But just so you know, a five-bedroom house, you know, five parking spaces, that's a very large driveway. Talk to a developer, and they'll say, yeah, that's making me pour a lot of concrete. And I think what we want to do, we don't have to go above code, because what you're doing is going way above code. And so I'm just trying to keep us in.
So I guess I would argue that most, we're just kind of creating estimates here, but so I'm not going to use most, I'm going to say many. Five-bedroom houses is likely to have a three-car garage, but even if it has a two-car garage, that's two parking spaces. So we're looking at three parking spaces in addition to the two that are in the garage. So that's either going to be, you know, the wider driveway or a longer driveway to accommodate that. And with five bedrooms, when you're looking at the possibility of five and six cars in that household, which we see, how do you?
I submit to you that most people keep stuff in their garage and don't park in the garage.
Well, I concur, but they still get to count that as parking.
And on top of that, it is good practice to have garage conversions, so for grandma and things like that. So garage conversions are another development that you would be shutting out once you start to do by the bedroom versus a dwelling unit. That's all I'm saying. I would go with dwelling unit. There's nothing wrong with saying dwelling unit. The bedroom gets to be problematic, in my opinion. That's all. So just increase the number, four per dwelling unit, three per dwelling unit.
You know, I think that the existing neighborhoods that we look at, where we think that they're problematic, probably already have four per dwelling unit. You know, they've got the two spaces in the garage, they have the two spaces in the driveway, and then three more cars on the street.
It's the infill development that I can see being a problem, which is going to happen. We're going to have a lot of infill development, and the developers are going to have to demonstrate for permit purposes how they're satisfying that part of the code. And I think they're going to be very creative with their languages, flex rooms, exercise rooms and such. And they can get away with that, and you can't stop them. And they may have two bedrooms, primary, secondary. They're not going to use languages that are going to define it beyond that. So my suggestion is dwelling unit, primary dwelling and accessory dwelling, because I do think you need to factor in accessory dwelling units in why you're doing this. Roll that in there.
Counselperson Meyer?
So I'm just going to speak from where I live and experience of what is happening in my neighborhood in the city. House down, cat and corner to my house, has three bedroom, two bath, seven vehicles. They park in the yard, they park in the neighbors, they park in front of ours. That being said, that creates a lot of tensions with neighbors. So now the neighbors are coming out yelling at each other one, saying, don't park in front. Well, it's the city street, they can park wherever. However, people now don't walk down these streets because it's not safe, because you've got cars everywhere that they don't want to walk. So you've changed the whole culture of a community by having cars and vehicles in places where people can't even walk. So I absolutely support. In fact, if we get more requirement, I'd be for that because it infringes on the neighbors that are already there and that's not being a good neighbor. So I totally support the bedroom.
Counselperson Plunkett?
Yeah, Mr. Serna, my concern with going to a larger number per primary dwelling unit is if you do start having the small houses with, you know, two bedrooms and things like that, then now you're over parking those people, so.
That's why it's two per primary dwelling. I agree with you that, just for update on the one per bedroom, that's what you see a lot with multifamily structures, which they have to park by the sleeping unit or the bedroom. So maybe you can say sleeping unit or something, I'm not sure.
Counselperson Lee?
Thank you. So I want a clarity on what you were saying. So what is your recommendation, four per primary and one per ADU? And your main concern is using the bedroom. And your main concern is using the bedroom mentality. So, right, and as it stands, the changes...
That's really it.
Right?
The language.
So, your recommendation would be a number per primary and then one per ADU?
Yes, yeah. I would keep the ADU in the mix. If you want to do bedroom, or maybe that's, you know, that's certainly a way to do that. I think you're going to get people that are not going to, developers are smart, and I think they're going to, they're going to say, "Yeah, that's not, that's a flex room, that's an exercise room, that's an office," and those are really bedrooms.
So, my question, I guess, then, is, so if I have a five-bedroom house, and we're saying, is that a minimum?
Five parking spaces.
Five per bedroom, is that a minimum or a maximum?
Minimum.
It would be a minimum, right? So, if I have a five-bedroom house, then I would, wouldn't I be increasing concrete?
Impervious cover.
Right, to provide parking for five cars? I'm looking at it that way, because you're, if you have a garage, I don't have a garage, but if you have a garage, there's two in there, your driveway can usually probably put two. So, you're already getting four per primary, right? And then one per ADU. I don't see the problem with that. Otherwise, if you're saying per bedroom, and we're looking at a five-bedroom house, where's that other concrete going to come from? Where are they going to put that other concrete, as a circle in front of their house to make sure that's, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, no, they'd have to have a large enough lot to fit a five-bedroom house.
Which would then take up more impervious cover, which we don't want to do.
Well, if we have the 60% number, whatever it is we're looking at later today, I mean, that's all factored in. It goes on the larger lot, you don't put more than, you know, that X percent on it for that five-bedroom house, and then you've met your impervious cover requirements.
If I may, some bedrooms are for children that don't drive, and I think we're providing parking spaces for minors that aren't not driving vehicles. So, I'm just seeing some things with that that aren't being done, so I'm just, I hear the concern is more about all the cars in the street, am I right?
It's having sufficient parking to park onsite, yes.
Okay. I think that that's going to be solved differently, because if you are going to say it's per bedroom, and I'm turning in plans, that's an exercise room, that's not a bedroom.
Right.
And who is going to stop us from, I mean, that's what I'm saying. Your building official could probably speak better to that, but that happens, and I've seen that happen.
I think it also drives up the cost for the homeowner, because to his point, I have a three-bedroom home, I live by myself, one I turn into a walk-in closet, the other one is, I don't know what it's going to be yet. But if I'm forced to make enough driveway space for three cars, and I live by myself, and no one's staying in those other rooms, you're driving up my cost to build my house.
On a, on that house, I have a way of saying that everyone that builds an ADU is going to die, and what I mean by that more simply is, is that everyone moves on, that we all live in our houses for a period of time, that might be our entire lives, but our houses in Bastrop, as we know, have a longevity that exceeds our lives. And so, you know, we're trying to plan for, and we're trying to create the rules that plan a neighborhood that creates a space that the people in that neighborhood, you know, that we think that they would like, and we're setting minimum standards, not, I guess you could, in theory, set maximum standards too, because you're doing that with the impervious cover numbers. But if you're setting, when you're talking about parking, minimum numbers of parking spaces, the problem you're trying to deal with is keeping cars out of the street, keeping cars off the sidewalks, so that, you know, people can walk their dogs or their kids or whatever during the week. And I agree that during a phase of time that might, you know, last a decade, that a family is going to have smaller children, but then they all drive. I mean, my youngest, third now, just got his driver's permit, you know, so we all see that. And so, it's a matter of, you know, what, how many spaces do we need as a minimum per house? And then how do we scale it based upon the size of the house, so that a larger house doesn't have a lot of cars in the street? And it just seems like bedroom is a rational way to scale it, because you're going to scale ba, I say bathroom. Bedroom is a rational way to scale it, because bedrooms more or less represents a proportional number of people in the facility in a normal circumstance. Sylvia, you kind of raised your hand.
Yes, I've been waving like crazy.
Hi.
Couple of things. One, you're not really going to find cities doing this, because planning always has a pendulum swing. In the beginning, we had wider streets, and then the planners somehow got it into their head that if you narrow the streets, you're going to slow traffic down, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We've all found that to not be true, so we're kind of heading in an opposite direction. That's sort of the first thing. The second thing is, I think the people writing the B3 Code had the same thought in mind. We have a cluster of cars on the road. They took it along the path of cars should go away, or cars need to be going away. Reality of it is, we're in Texas in a semi-rural environment where cars are not going to go away, so we need to plan for them. And it is a conjunction of two things. It is a wider street section, which we're frantically trying to work in that direction also, but it is a parking stipulation. And if we're planning for the future, and we're selling to people with children, those children are going to grow up, too. Three is, the home builder who's building a five-bedroom house is, I guarantee you, building a three-car garage. Guarantee you. So, it's three cars in the garage, and that's three cars on the parking pad, that's already six. Your house is setback enough that you can fit three cars already there, so you're not even affected, because in the last code, we said the driveway counts. You don't need a garage, per se, a carport, a driveway, those things count. And the final thing is, in terms of impervious cover, absolutely, I don't want you to add any more concrete, but home builders have figured that out. They articulate the houses, they create these little carve-outs, because it is a math number. How big of a structure can I get? Because why? They get more money per square foot, and I'm staring straight at the realtor over there who earns her living like that. Lastly, is from a creative aspect, this is why I want us to give credit to capture that, some of that water, earn a credit so that you can do that, so that you're not, there's not a massive strain on the water supply. It is a dual-prong approach. And to say that my staff can't figure out the International Residential Code, the IRC, to define a bedroom, I'm sorry, but I'm going to defend them 10 ways to Sunday. But secondly, is we take the plans at face value, I don't call anybody a liar. If the plan says it's an office, it's an office. Not going to do it. And you know why? Because it is not worth that headache. If later on, they're parking on the street, it's creating havoc, they're going to have to deal with a neighbor like Sylvia, I mean, like Cynthia. At the point of Semedo, and I think what, we're getting wrapped around a, an issue that isn't really an issue, it can become an issue, but what we're faced with today is a horrible issue of things spilling out into the street. We talked about Pecan being the most beautiful street. Well, guess what? Pecan's a wider cross-section, right? Because it's a collector. It's wider than some of the, it's wider than Pine, that's for doggone sure. And why does Pecan have that aesthetic value? Because it's wider? Because those setbacks are greater? Because those lot sizes are greater? Everything that we took away in the B3 Code. So, please tell me, where is the craziness, and where does it stop? We're fighting about parking. Is it even a fight?
Now, I have a question that's going to seem like a tangent. How is ADU defined? And can someone build, you know, 12-bedroom ADU?
An accessory dwelling unit has a living space and may or may not have a kitchen space, and I'll let the building official. Can they build a 12-bedroom ADU? If you grew up, or I grew up, where nine people lived in less than a 700-square-foot house, I can tell you, I can fit a lot of people in an ADU. Right? He and I, he and I grew up in the same city.
I have an answer to that, if you want to know.
Sure.
ADUs are percentage of the primary dwelling unit. So, if you want a 12-bedroom ADU, you're going to have to have about a 144-room house. So, it's a percentage, and you should set limits. A lot of towns do that, because you can quickly get up to 1,000 square feet. We don't have a, you need to do, I'm going to talk about ADs in a little bit. But we do need to take ADs very seriously, and they shouldn't...
No, I completely agree. I mean, we need to meet our...
They shouldn't be larger than 600.
Need to meet our impervious cover requirements, we need to have sufficient parking onsite. I mean, all the things that I even feel like are current, the current thing that we'll get to in a moment, you know, doesn't say those out loud, and, but yeah.
And Pablo, I think you and I had this conversation earlier on, in the very beginning, it was like one and a half per bedroom, right? We had the conversation, and it ended up with, a three-bedroom house would end up with a four-bedroom, which is the two-car garage and the two parking pads. And it is, for remodels, for example, and in Old Town, I think Councilmember Foster and I had this conversation earlier, when a remodel in Bastrop proper, for example, comes forward, who's defining what a bedroom is? Because it might be described as a parlor.
I've also seen where they do the two parking spaces per dwelling unit, not including garage parking, so they exclude that from the count, because they know garages are going to be converted. So, you can add language. We're not, what we're doing is above code, just letting you all know, and I understand why you're doing it.
No, I think we're intentionally going above code, so that we could...
I agree with that. We need to address parking, and my point is that it's a bigger problem than just putting more drive, putting more parking spaces off-street. That's my point.
No, and I will freely admit that the neighborhoods that I drive through or walk through and have concern about have four and six parking spaces per house already, and we're looking at numbers that are equivalent to that. So, it's really just making sure it doesn't get worse than what we already have in our existing neighborhoods, is really the nature of this conversation.
Mayor Bar Tim, could I call for a question?
Well, we don't have a motion on the table.
To end the discussion.
Well, you can make a motion if you'd like.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, so we have a couple lights on for some discussion. We have a motion and a second on the table, so now we are debating the merits of this and what we do next. So, Counselperson Lee.
Thank you. So, my question is this regarding the bedroom. Most homes that are being built in these subdivisions are three bedrooms, right? So, again, and most of them have garages, so I'm confused on why we're stuck on the word "bedroom," because most of the homes that are being built are three bedrooms, will have the two garage space, will have the two concrete space. To me, it seems like all of this is really mute, because the problem is the street width, because even if they have the four parking spaces in the yard, we still have a problem with the streets. Our primary issues with these neighborhoods are the streets, so where and when are we going to be changing the street to match the restrictions that we're putting on the parking to reduce the parking on the street?
It's a function of the setback, too. It's a function of the setback right now that's very low, right? 10 feet. It's a function of that. It's a function of street width, and it's also a function that no parking is required.
I feel like we should be having that discussion, and...
We are, those are the items that are in front of you.
And, well, the street width?
The, no, but the...
I'm talking about the street width, the street width, because if we don't change the street width, and a new development comes in, and they still do the smaller street, we're still going to have the parking problem.
Well, but I just explained it's a three-prong approach. It's the street width, it's the setbacks, and it is the no parking required. So, today is the first swipe at parking is required, and this is a number. We may, we may change it, but it's one of three things that we have to address.
And how soon will we be addressing the other two, is what I'm asking?
That was Councilmember Myers's, eight weeks for the changes that are required to talk about setbacks, lot sizes. In, for the vast majority of what I'm going to say, Bastrop proper, what was also known as the Iredale District, is not going to be an issue unless there's infill development. And with the infill development and the no lot size minimum, that's where we get ourselves into trouble. It was the perfect storm of no lot size minimum, no parking required, and very high impervious cover. That was a developer's dream to come and build the most that they can on a piece of property with no parking. So, this is step one of a three-prong approach.
Counselperson Foster.
Yeah, I just want to be clear what we're voting on, because this discussion that we're talking about is actually Item 10G, even though it's on the supporting documents for both D and G, and Item 10D is what we're voting on right now, which is more about the, that removing parking, to allow residential garage facades in the second layer and allow parking in the first layer.
So, on...
The supporting documents are similar, because they copy the same page, so they're on both, but we are actually, the entire conversation we just had was about 10G, so I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're voting on. 10D is a different one, if you, I know, it's the supporting, it's on the same page.
Yeah, we see the red lines.
But if you look in the staff report, it's a different matter. That, the previous, if you go back two more, if you go previous. That is what we're talking about for 10D.
This is not in our packet, though, right? Is that what you're saying?
It's in the staff report, this is what it says in the staff report. It's just the supporting documents from the B3 Code, both 10D and both 10G are on the same page of the strike-throughs, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Okay, you want to take a better shot at it?
Yeah, essentially, both 10D and 10G are on the same page, because they are on the same page of the B3 Code. And so, currently, the, for 10G, sorry, 10D, it is this right here on the screen.
Got it. So, we're dealing with residential garage facades...
The location of them.
...shall begin in the second or third layer, and onsite parking is allowed in the first layer. Got it. Those are the changes for 10D. Okay. So, thank you. We now know what we have a motion to approve about. Are there any further comments? Okay. Madam City Secretary.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. So, yeah, let's do 10G, since we just spent a lot of time talking about it mostly.
I'd like to speak on that.
Yes, and we do have Mr. Serna signed up for 10G as well.
Okay. Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street, Bastrop, Texas. I wanted to give you a real-life scenario of what's going to happen. A lot of people convert their garages into whatever, game rooms, grandma's room, whatever. When they go through the permit process, they have to demonstrate that they have satisfied the parking requirement. If the parking isn't, is calculated in the garage, and you don't stipulate that it's not, then they will have to pour more, either pour concrete or show that they're parking on a stabilized surface, whatever parking surface we have written in the code. So, you've actually made that what would have been a small conversion, garage conversion, into a much more costly endeavor.
That rule would only apply if the conversion is more than 50% or 51% of the value of the home, because then it has to come up to current standards.
If you have to pull a mechanical, a plumbing, or electrical permit in the state of Texas, if you have a licensed professional, they have to pull permits.
No, pull permits, absolutely, but the parking stipulation that you mentioned, and again, in all of the other subdivisions, except Bastrop proper, they have HOA requirements, so they're going to have a separate set of rules. This is really dealing with Bastrop proper.
Sure, infill development.
And minimums for future neighborhoods.
Yes, and minimums for future neighborhoods. And so, most of what's in Bastrop proper already has enough sort of setback, except for the one little house that you told me, the real tiny little house on across from the stadium. Most of those houses already have adequate setback to fill the car requirement. And so, it's my hope that it's not a disparate impact to somebody who wants to do a garage conversion, if it's below the 51% threshold, because that is when our new codes, we require them to come up to new codes. It's impossible, if not requires doggone magic, for me to have a homeowner come to all current codes when they're going to... all current codes when they're going to do a, a room addition, a remodel, or something like that. Almost everybody tries to stay below the 51% so that they don't have to come up. But yes, they are required to pull mechanical, plumbing, and electrical permits.
Okay, so that, if they don't remodel more than 51% of their home, they don't have to comply with the land development code?
Well, up to current standards, to current standards. So if we were to change the parking standard, for example, and I have, I'm going to say 1-0-0-5, um, pecan, because that's on everybody's mind, if that house was still standing and they were going to do a remodel and it was including an additional bedroom, there wouldn't be an additional quote-unquote parking requirement if it's under the 51% threshold.
I already said my piece on the other one, so I...
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam City Secretary.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, 10 foxtrot. Consider an act on the second reading of ordinance 2024-49 amending the B-3 code, Chapter 14, Article 6 dot 3, general lot standards, Section 6 dot 3, 003, building placement as attached in Exhibit A. So I had requested this one because of all of the duplicate exhibits with the B-3 code that Councilperson Foster pointed out. So, uh, I, I don't think I have anything further on this one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Madam City Secretary.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. 10H, consider an act on the second reading of 2024-52 amending the Code of, Chapter 1, general provisions, mayor and city council, mayor compensation expense account, city council, composition, meetings, compensation of council members to comply with the City of Bastrop Home Rule Charter, and so on. Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. So just a quick question. I was just wondering why, uh, in Section 1.03.062, compensation of council members, it's taking out the $30 because that was incorrect, but why that wasn't updated with the new amended amounts?
If I recall correctly, it just points to the charter. It just says, shall be paid according to the current charter. Uh, the last couple of charter revisions that have...
It's outlined in the Home Rule Charter.
Yeah, that have modified that number, have modified it only in the charter and not in the ordinances, the ordinances was behind. And so this prevents that from ever happening again.
And then the next one, expense account, I think it's missing a word. Um, as it reads, it says it's outlined in the Home Rule Char, Rule Charter while on official business trips for the city, the city shall, council shall be reimbursed for actual expenses, advanced expenses. And that's where I think a word is missing, um, because as it reads, you don't, we're not reimbursed on advanced expenses. Um, so I feel like there should be a provided advanced expenses or something, or provided a daily, just as it says, provided a daily per diem rate. But as it reads, when I'm reading it, it's like, uh, council shall be reimbursed for actual expenses, advanced expenses. We're not reimbursed.
And this is a 1-0-3-0-6-5 expense account? Is that one, that one? Okay.
I feel like there should be a provided advanced expenses, or whatever the word you want to use, just like it says provided a daily per, per diem.
Okay, so as outlined in the Home Rule Charter, while on official business trips for the city, the city council shall be reimbursed for actual expenses, comma, advanced expenses, comma, and/or provided a daily per diem rate as established by the city council adopted rules and procedures.
And we're not reimbursed for advanced, so maybe an and/or there?
Um, so there is an, okay, so let me tell you where the advanced happens. So when there is a, a trip that's planned and we give everybody, we know what the mileage is, we know what your per diem rate is, we know la-la-la-la, and we calculate and here it is. If you come back with that advanced, uh, expense and you spent it all, but you have additional trips, you have additional tips, you have additional parking, you have additional, et cetera, et cetera, those are the receipts you turn in, and you will be reimbursed.
Oh, so that is referring to anything else? Okay. Maybe additional advanced expenses?
Additional is probably the word.
And there's, there's no Oxford comma, which bugs me.
I'm sorry?
I said there's no Oxford comma, which bugs me.
Oh, okay. Advanced, uh, or what was your term?
No, no, I get that.
Additional.
Before and slash or, there's no comma there.
Oh, gotcha.
And when you read it, you put the comma there because there should be one, because you're a normal person.
You sure about that? Um, additional advanced expenses.
You guys are good with that? I'll move to approve. H.
Second.
Add your amendment to it, please.
With my amendment to add additional.
And an Oxford comma, maybe?
And the extra comma.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilperson Lee, a second from Councilperson Foster. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster. Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor, oh, Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. 10I, consider an act on Resolution 2025-07 canvassing returns and declaring the results of the adoption or rejection of proposed amendments to the existing Home Rule Charter at the special election from November 5th.
Thank you. And on this one, um, we just want to make sure we're clear on one of the whereas's. And I, I, I copied and pasted, so I don't remember which whereas it is. But...
We had G and L that said that they passed but did not.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm for the public consumption, so they know what I'm talking about.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah. On the, thank you, Kevin, or Councilmember Plunkett. On the last whereas, it, it says that along with other instruments with the adoption of propositions, and then it lists all the propositions out, A through M, as written, it implies that all of these propositions pass. So we want to make sure that we amend this, amend our document or our whereas there to ensure that it specifies that props G and L were rejected. So the motion would be to amend the whereas adopting all propositions and correcting the language to specify that props G and L were rejected.
Um, would you like another whereas stipulating that also?
We, we already have the whereas there, we just need to modify it.
We just need to modify it.
I'll just say with the exception of G and L.
Yeah, with the exception of G, that would work, yeah. So can you maybe word that as a motion?
I'll move that we approve that, um, with adding the words after, uh, with, with adding the words with the exception of G and L into that whereas.
Motion from Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Meyer. Any comments? Please run the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
I think we just finished the consent agenda.
Okay, just, just to clarify, you made a motion to amend the resolution, but you didn't say to approve the resolution. So I, I think we need a second motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
New motion, new second. New vote.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we're finished with the consent agenda. Items for individual consideration, 11A, conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-04, amending the Code of Ordinances related to Chapter 14, Article 6.5, building type, Section 65003, building standards per place type, a lot occupation, and, well, and so on, uh, that. So, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. So this item that we have before you tonight is in regards to the discussion on the quantity of additional dwelling units that are, that is allowed by right. Currently, two additional dwelling units are allowed by right. The proposal tonight is to reduce that down to one per right and the increase based on the property owner being able to meet the different requirements of the code, such as parking that we implemented, setbacks, impervious cover. In order to go up from one additional dwelling unit, they just have to meet those requirements. It's just an extra step in order to provide some stability in the, in, a lot of it is the Bastrop proper area, so you don't have a million dwelling units popping up everywhere where infrastructure wasn't built for that.
So why would, I, I mean, I get why you would allow them to build the additional ones, but why even the first one? Why would you allow the first one to be built if there wasn't parking or you violated impervious cover?
That's a great question. The permits wouldn't be able to be issued for that. It's just allowing one by right is, I'm not, is that what is required?
What does that mean?
I believe it might be in the Texas Home Government Code.
That, that means everybody who's not within an HOA that has a different regulation has an additional dwelling unit as a property owner, as our current code is written.
Um, the, the concept of by right, though, is there a state law that we're dealing with?
Well, yes, entitlements, and then also as it's written in our own law, in our own Code of Ordinances.
Well, no, I agree with that, but what the, the point is, is, is if someone says, I have the right to build an accessory dwelling unit and we haven't limited the size of them, so, you know, I, I silly example of the 12, 12-bedroom version, um, and we don't require that they meet parking or impervious cover requirements, by the statement, you can build it by right at least. I mean, maybe there's somewhere, somewhere else that's causing it to be required, but how, how are we not, like, breaking all sorts of other rules by allowing this?
Amen.
Well, but what's the answer?
Permit review. Mr. Serna, so you're right. So we went from two in the code with no, I mean, allowed by right, and by right is because our law gives them that right, to one.
But it's not an, it's not absolute, though. Or is it?
No.
That's kind of the nature of my question is, is that if we're giving them...
No, if you change it today, it, you know, it's gone. If you change it today, if our ordinance is amended, then there is no quote-unquote right to it. No.
We're changing it to one, so by right, they can have one.
Sure, but if the code is amended to zero, then there's no right to it. And, and Mayor Baratim Kirkland is asking, is there a state law that requires an ADU by right? And the answer is no.
Yeah, but, but again, the, like, I, I want people to be able to build ADUs if they have the room and can provide the parking, so they're not putting a burden on everybody else through flooding and parking their cars in front of other people's houses. But, but so, this is kind of the nature of the question, is that what is it that enforces all of the other rules when someone says, I want to build an ADU?
It'll be when they go to apply for the permit for that primary ADU.
You're, you're talking about a process. I'm, I'm talking about in, in the code here, like, which, you know...
A building permit is still required for an ADU.
Yes, so the, uh, well, unless the ADU is like 200 square feet.
Yes, there is that exception.
The, the table just shows where it's allowed, quote-unquote, and when we say by right, it means the table says it's okay to do it. That doesn't exempt them from coming in through the permit review process or any of the, any of the other development processes.
And, and part of the reason I ask the question is because it talks about, you can do a second one if you meet these rules, but I'm think, I'm thinking, oh, wait a second, you have to meet those rules to build the first one, too. Like, why are we calling out the second one as special?
You do have to meet the rules for the, for the first one as well.
Well, we should say that.
Well, so when we, again, right, from a staff perspective, when we go to process a permit, the first place staff goes is, okay, what's the zoning? Okay, real quick, check that box. Okay, is this allowed by right? And I guess we should stop at by right. We should just say, is this allowed in the code? We go, yes, there's an accessory dwelling unit allowed, check. If, if on that table, we were in the lowest designation and it's not listed, we would go, ah, no, you can't do it unless you go through a variance, unless you go through a zoning change application or some other legislative process that allows that. When we say by right, it's because you, the council legislatively, have made a decision to change the Code of Ordinances to allow it, quote-unquote, by right. Still has to go through the permitting process, but I get where folks can be confused, or we may have misstated it, that it's by right, because they still have to go through the permit process. And this is intending to require one parking space also per the ADU. That's, that's in our conversation.
But if you read this, uh, this is the paragraph I was referring to. You know, it talks about specific requirements for the second one, but it says the first one is allowed by right. That causes me as the reader to believe that you don't have to meet those same requirements for the first one. And I think we're saying in here that's not true, which either makes this misleading or something, so I...
It, it is perhaps misleading because, again, I'm just taking you through the process of what our staff goes through. We go check the table. If it's allowed by right, quote-unquote, on the table, then we go, okay, it's okay to process the permit application through the normal traps that, you know, we've got to do that through. And if somebody were to come in, in this existing example, if somebody were to come in and we pull up the property and they already have an additional dwelling unit, we say, oh, no, there's an extra step. And that is, let's look at the parcel, let's calculate impervious cover, let's calculate your parking, let's calculate all of those things. If those conditions can be met, then we may process that.
Right. And we haven't set a size limit in our code on ADUs. Is that correct?
We have not.
Okay, I mean, I think that might be prob, really problematic because, you know, the 2,500 square foot ADU and, you know, do something obscene that's, you know, not intended by anyone that...
In my home city, accessory dwell, not just accessory dwelling units, accessory units were required to be less than 50% of the primary unit.
Still pretty big. I mean, you know, it's appro, yeah, it's approaching reasonable, but I mean, like, my house is probably 3,000, so then, you know, 1,500 square foot accessory dwelling unit, it, you know, that's a, that's a three-bedroom house. Yeah.
So, but, okay, so let's, let's, let's reverse that because part of our conversation here is that we're not having a disparate impact to folks who live in the Iredelle, what we're calling the Iredelle District and have large lots. Um, I, I am a massive proponent of single-family residential. If I bought in a single-family and I thought it was going to be single-family, then it should remain single-family. And the more ADUs that you put in, it begins to lose that single-family feel. But I also understand that we have an aging population who are taking care of their parents, who are taking care of perhaps disabled children or disabled family members, so I get that there is a need. The lots in the Iredelle District, went through this conversation with Councilmember Foster also, we took, our GIS team took the entire boundary of the Iredelle District, and I took every single lot size out of it and I took an average. The Iredelle District has an average lot size of .44 or so, a little shy of half an acre. So when you have some of the houses on Main Street even that are smaller, they're a smaller footprint, they're the, you know, 1950s, 1960s, that are 1,200 square feet and have no garage and just have the long drive, but they have a really large backyard and can perhaps put a 600 square foot ADU behind, the setbacks are wide enough, I don't know that that's harming anybody.
No, and I agree that, you know, you said 600 square feet, he said 600 square feet. I mean, that's the sort of thing that does feel like an ADU. You know, that's the, the granny shed sized thing with a one-bedroom and a small kitchenette or full kitchen or whatever. It, it fits in that space. But, and, and our code doesn't say 50%, but you know, you know, the 50% number, you know, that'd still be 1,500 square feet at my house, so that's huge, that's...
And, and I'm, I'm receptive to whatever number that, my point is, we don't have a number, and we do need a number.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean...
I would, I would like to, just reading this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I would like to clarify this, uh, paragraph, the first one, to make sure that it's easily understood that all ADUs require the impervious cover to be met. But this, to me, when I read this, it tells me that only the second and... But this, to me, when I read this, it tells me that only the second and, and additional ADUs beyond that require the impervious cover.
Yeah, that was a concern I had, too.
I agree. I think it's an assumption that shouldn't be there, right? I mean, because we only are concerned with two or more, but we should be concerned with one or more.
Agreed, and to me, we don't, even, if I were reading this, I would even say, "No, it's clarified by saying allowed by right is one, and two shall be allowed subject to impervious cover standards."
So...
I'm trying to think of how to wordsmith a sentence.
It's almost like you would fix this by, by, by striking the number of accessory dwelling units allowed by right shall be one, and, so then, just strike those two lines, the first two lines that are still up there, just strike them completely, and then put "up to two ADUs shall be allowed subject to meeting the established impervious cover standards." So, just say "up to."
Is two the cap that you want to put it at? Because when you look at the second sentence, it says, or the second paragraph, sorry, more than two may be approved if they can meet the requirements.
You know, we have a cap of two right now, and I, I mean, certainly no issue with that so far, at least reported in our, you know, discussions about the B-3 Code, so...
This was a conversation where Tom Dickey from Neighbors stood up and said, "These are affordable housing units," and he needs his employees to be able to live in these types of units, where, you know, the large lots, an acre, .75 of an acre, we've got to do something to clean up, because the top of that is in the P-2 and the P-4, and it's pointing to the table. So, in P-2 and P-4, "to," what was your comment? ADU shall be allowed subject to meeting...
No, I just said, "up," you know, "up to." "Up to two ADUs shall be allowed subject to meeting," and so, the first two lines, "The number of accessory dwelling units allowed by right shall be one," I mean, you could just strike that entirely. And then where it says "two ADUs," you could say "up to," and so it's based upon meeting the, the requirements.
And then you would strike the last paragraph as well?
I think I would. I, I, I wouldn't want to accidentally create a, you know, 12-ADU-type situation, which ends up becoming, you know, multifamily in, in someone's backyard. But that's just kind of talking through it here. Counselperson Fosser?
Um, yes, I just want to make sure that A, when it says "structures," is totally different than accessory dwelling units. That could be, are you sure that's not like remnants from like a shed or something? Because accessory dwelling is total, is different than structure, because I think you can have, I think up to four structures, but two, up to two, I'm just talking right now, not the proposed, two ADUs and then up to two additional structures. So, I just want to be careful with that, that we're not striking sheds and stuff like that.
No, 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 that's a really good point.
It should be consistent, you're right, Councilmember Fosser.
Colin, am I able to make live? Are you in the shared? Okay. No, if you, can you go back? Go back to the P-2, P-4 lot occupation? No, the, the text, right there. Nope, I'm not live. Let me exit out and go to Agenda Share. I want to make sure we capture this, because part of the struggle is to make sure that what you were saying on the dais makes its way into the code.
Right, into the code, yeah. Pablo Serna does have, in fact, have a comment card for this one.
You have to open up the public hearing first.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. So, let's open up a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. We have Pablo Serna signed up to speak.
Colin, go live on that PowerPoint, on the Agenda Share, please.
Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street, Bastrop, Texas. So, my comment on this is that you need to include a minimum lot size. One of the problems that we do have is, so it was pointed out, is you can have a very small lot, and you could stack an ADU on top of a garage by right. By, and right, to my understanding, is what you can, are you entitled to, which includes an assessment of the site and the building code. So, you get two permits when you apply for these, and a site permit and a building permit, and both of those are followed through by the Inspection Department. So, I think if you don't include a minimum lot size, which I think it should be, most zoning don't do less than 5,000, so maybe you did five. I was looking at, maybe if you take an acre and you divide it into eight dwelling units per acre, which is the size of a traditional neighborhood, six to eight, that's about 5,445 square feet. For example, Hyde Park in Austin, I researched it, their minimum lot size for an ADU is 7,200, and they are one of the more strict historical districts around, so they put a very high number on that. If you don't put a number on this, and you just say you're by right, like you've already indicated, and you can stick one above, you've created density, because an accessory dwelling unit means that there's two families living on there, and if you do more, that's multifamily, and I guess, we're not trying to do that. I think the, the intent was to look around and see that there's some really tiny lots, which will lead to another discussion I have on 11C about the difference between a small lot and a large lot.
And so, you know, the concept of lot sizes isn't really in our agenda today.
Should be.
Well, I, I'm not suggesting we don't think it should be addressed, I'm just saying, I don't think that it's in our agenda today and needs to go through planning and zoning.
My recommendation is that you, you add a minimum lot size, and I suggest 5,445 square feet on item 11A.
I think we may need to go through planning and zoning for that and make that same recommendation there. Okay, so, we're, we're, we have in a public hearing here. Sorry. Any other, okay, no more comments, so let's close that public hearing now. Counselperson Blockhead.
Well, I, I guess it's, yeah, we're, go ahead, Sylvia, I think you were going to talk about the lot size. Thank you.
If I could hug Mr. Serna today and it not be inappropriate, I would do so.
Fist bump, yeah.
This is absolutely the place to talk about lot size minimums, and I know Councilmember Fosser, it hurts your heart, they wouldn't have gone through the public hearing process. And, and we can circle back with the lot size minimums, but we are talking about ADUs, and we are talking about the infiltration into what is a normal single-family residential designation that becomes quickly multifamily if you don't set a standard to it. I am completely sensitive to affordable housing, but as we're finding out from Pecan, it, it is eight where one used to be, with the ability to have an additional ADU on top of that, so nine, really. And if he subdivides it under the current rules, you're looking at, you know, 16 potentially or so in what is in a single-family designation, and that's, that's not really what we intended, and I know that's not what we intended in the protections. So, I, I, from understanding that the Iredelle District has an average of a .44, and I can pull up, I can pull up the Excel table, I believe we have to give it a, we have to give it a lot size standard. The impervious cover number, you're going to be able to meet it over the garage. Many of these units have the detached garage, or the larger lots have the detached garages and are able to meet it, but even some of the smaller lots, if there is an ADU component, you know, we can get through that through an administrative variance process.
Oh, wait, he said my name. So, my question for you is in regards to the notice provided in the Agenda, Texas Open Meetings Act and so on. If we were to choose to add a minimum lot size in the discussion of, in our discussion right now that we're having about ADUs, would that, would that meet the requirements for notification?
Specific to the Open Meetings Act? Yes.
Okay. Is there something else I should be concerned about? The way you answered that was peculiar.
I just wanted to make sure I understood your question.
No, no, do, do we have notification? Are we able to make a change to that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, legal is, is answered.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, because I didn't clarify that, because you asked a separate question. I don't know that our attorney, okay, so I'm, I'm going to play City Manager here and ask the Mayor Protemda. The, what was advertised is additional dwelling units, specifically lot occupation than the number required. So, we're already talking about restrictions to additional dwelling units. It's the same topic, it's the same chapter. Does that still require a separate notice?
No, no, I heard that we could make that change.
Oh, I thought he said no, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he said, "Okay."
My apologies, my apologies.
Okay, got it. Okay, Counselperson Fosser?
Okay, so we currently have no lot size minimums for building, but we're instituting a lot size minimum for ADUs. How does that work? How can, how does that work? Can we do that?
You're, you're nodding your head. I assume you cannot, that you're, you're doing it for the whole lot, not for just an ADU.
We're talking ADUs right now.
So, your question is, we don't have lot size minimums for single-family.
Correct.
You know, why do we have, so, you're really given a square foot, so you're given a quantity. If they have the area, we're going, this is kind of holistic thinking, if they have the area, you're just trying to set a minimum that they have to have in order to make that area more dense without increasing the overall density in the neighborhood. So, there's such a thing as dwelling unit per acre, and that's how a lot of people look at density. The farm, the farm blocks are where I live, it's two acres that around Hill, Farm, Jefferson, and Spring, it's two acres. Right now, half of it is undeveloped, that the original owner that owned one acre is still there. They never divided their lot. Wherever's where I'm at, they've divided it five times. Okay, so five times, so the density is already...
So, Pablo, the, the question is, are we talking about the lot size for an ADU, period? Or are we talking about the lot size?
To be able to do an ADU, you're trying to control density...
To be able to create an ADU.
Yeah, you're, you're trying to control density, not, not, to answer your question, you're trying to say, you can create more density if you have the area, that's all.
So, you're talking about a minimum lot size in order to add an ADU?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how is that not handled by having the impervious cover requirements? Two-story.
Say again, I don't understand your question. Oh, if you don't have impervious, so...
No, no, I, I guess I was thinking that if we have a, I don't even know what the number is.
You have to pull a permit for an ADU.
Agreed, but let's say you've got a 50% impervious cover requirement.
Okay.
You know, if you have space on your land to put that structure, and it doesn't get too big, you know, and you're still meeting your 50%, you still, and, yeah, and you still need parking, it seems like that address, I mean, I'm all in favor of minimum lot sizes, but I'm just, you know, thinking that, I think we're okay with the impervious cover.
It's density, it, so the number of minimum square footage is to control density per acre.
Okay.
It, it's, it's related, but it's really, I think you brought up the point about Pecan Street, I think they're trying to really put some density in that smaller lot.
Right, okay. So, then we're not talking about setting minimum lot sizes for everything?
For, for single-family, no.
But only talking about, although we will talk about it, it'll come back.
That's probably coming.
Got it. But we are talking in order to put an ADU?
Yes.
Okay, that's the distinction. Kind of like that. Okay, so, Madam City Manager, were you making changes to this to show us while we were kind of chatting?
That, that, these are the changes that you recommended, so I wanted to make sure that the audience understands and can see what we were proposing.
So, no, I think this is original still.
The one on the right. This one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The black text on the right.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, yeah. And then on A, we didn't, we did originally say to strike it, but Counselperson Fosser correctly pointed out that that's a different kind of structure. It's structures, like sheds, not ADUs.
Oh, understood, understood.
And so, we don't want to strike it, we're basically saying that, now, now, do we want to say more than two versus up to two, the same sort of a thing, sort of like up to two additional structures, again, if you meet the other impervious cover requirements?
So, with that, are you trying to say if you have two ADUs, you can't have a shed?
Uh, no, I'd say up to two additional structures.
Okay.
So, if you have the ADUs, you can have a shed, again, if you're meeting your impervious cover requirements, you're not creating a density, because presumably, you're not going to let people live in your shed.
And so, the change is up to two additional, what is the change?
Mayor Protemda, so as long as I'm meeting the impervious cover, I, I could have three additional structures, yeah? So, saying up to means you're restricting me to two, but it, but really, as long as I'm not meeting the impervious cover, I could have three small structures.
So...
I don't want to put a restriction on it if I'm still within my impervious cover, is what I'm saying.
So, I concur that the impervious cover is one of the most important elements in the conversation, and I think I was wanting to imply a limit, and we could even say up to three, but I mean, but, but, but I don't want to create this weird situation where someone puts 20 of something somewhere.
Well, but...
We never write a rule for the exception.
We don't ever write rules for the exception, and, and I will be quite honest with you, is when somebody's putting a accessory shed that they bought at Home Depot Lowe's, it's often on, it's not mounted on a concrete structure, it's mounted on piers, et cetera, et cetera, and that's not even going to count towards your impervious cover limit, because water can flow through that. So, in, I don't want us to put a rule for the sake of putting a rule, and on a half-acre lot, if you want to do your little garden greenhouse, and your shed for the tools for that greenhouse, and your chicken coop and...
Gazebot.
Gazebot, and your deck, so...
Okay, so, I mean, we could simply strike more than two and say, "Additional structures may be approved with the, the impervious cover requirements and other infrastructure demands can be met." And then that allows you to do common sense things.
Yeah, more than two is...
Yeah. But in this case, I think since we also had the confusion about the ADU versus structures, that, you know, additional structures and maybe parentheses, it says, you know, sheds, comma, you know, one or two more examples, et cetera.
Or just non-habitable, non... Non-dwelling.
Oh, non-dwelling, oh, yeah, that works, non-dwelling structures, yeah.
So, just replace more than two with non-dwelling, or, or put, I guess, put non-dwelling after additional.
Additional non-dwelling structures, yeah. This is how the sausage is made. This is fun, guys, thank you.
We're having a heck of a time.
So, can I move to approve with the amended language up on the screen?
Do you want to address the minimum lot size for an ADU?
Yeah, I think we can do that when we do minimum lot sizes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I'd like more time to investigate that.
Okay, motion on the table to approve with the comments that are on the screen, which say, "Up to two ADUs are allowed subject to meeting the established impervious cover standards, as well as the onsite parking requirements set forth in 60306B2, and then, additional non-dwelling structures may be approved if the impervious cover requirements and other infrastructure demands can be met."
Second.
And we have a second. Counselperson Fosser?
Further discussion, please. Sylvia, I remember when this discussion was at P&amp;Z, you also talked about infrastructure requirements, and I don't see that listed here. Do you want to add that, or is it just impervious cover and parking, or am I missing it?
Infrastructure, i.e., water sewer.
Right, that's not in this language, but it was in...
No, but infrastructure is, do you want to clarify infrastructure?
No, that's fine, I just, I don't have my glasses. Is it up there?
Yes, and other infrastructure.
Oh, perfect, okay, great.
Okay.
Oh, no, that's just for, that's just for structures, it's not in the ADU, it's not in... Oh, no, that's just for... That's just for structures, it's not in the ADU. It's not in the first part, is it?
We changed it to up to two ADUs are allowed, subject to meeting the established impervious cover standards as well. Oh, impervious cover standards, onsite parking requirements set forth, and other infrastructure requirements.
Okay, yes, I make sure it's in the one above A as well.
Do we need an amended motion for that?
I accept that amended.
Accepted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
I have a question. Don't we have to vote on the amendment to the motion?
It was accepted. So because the amendment was accepted...
But we still have to vote on the second?
Because it's a friendly amendment, it just changes the motion that's on the floor, and it doesn't have to be voted on.
I think we still have to vote on the friendly amendment.
It's a parliamentary question. And so if the motion, call it a non-friendly motion, meaning they didn't accept it, then if you can get a second for the change, then that would cause it to be changed.
Parliamentary procedure requires that we do it, but...
So... So my assumption is, is that you haven't studied our rules of procedure, and they're not rubber rules of order?
I didn't say rubber rules of order, I say parliamentary.
I was speaking to his, yeah.
Practice is very unparliamentary, legally speaking. On the final vote for the whole thing, if it was accepted, it was friendly, the final vote will suffice, will take care.
Okay, thank you. Oh, am I still voting?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Okay, so we pass unanimously. Finish our first individual consideration item. All right. 11B. Conduct a public hearing, consider and act on the first reading of ordinance 202503, amending the code of ordinances related to Chapter 14, Article 6.3, general lot standards, cross-access connections. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. So currently in the B-3 code, cross-access connections are required wherever alleys are not present. For example, Chick-fil-A. Cross-access connection was required in Burleson Crossing, and it has caused a lot of issues. The amendment before you is to add a stipulation to allow staff, whenever cross-access connection would create undesirable connections, such as Chick-fil-A, to not... So it'll go to the Development Review Committee in order to not require that cross-access connection. Any questions?
Move to approve. Hold on. We have a public hearing for this one.
Yes.
So let's open the public hearing. Madam City Secretary, do we have anyone?
No.
Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing. Okay. Move to approve. We have a motion and a second. Councilperson Foster.
For Exhibit A, are we voting in our packet on Exhibit A? Page 249 of the packet, is it just this, or are we using that exhibit? Because the exhibit was outdated, and I just want to make sure that's not part of our motion. Can y'all see that? Yeah. That's part of the, like, straight-through language, was like the previous one from P&amp;Z, remember?
No, it would just be for, like, for this motion, it would just be for A. For this right here, for the cross-access connection.
Okay, awesome.
The rest of those were a change with the other one.
Perfect, okay. I'm done.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. 11C, and we do have someone signed up on this one. Conduct a public hearing, consider and act on the first reading of ordinance 202502, amending the code of ordinances related to Chapter 14, Article 6.5, building types, Section 6503, building standards per place type. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. So this amendment is to reduce the currently allowed impervious cover amounts. Especially in P5, we have very high impervious cover amounts at 80%. The previous code had a maximum impervious cover at 50%, and so that's what our drainage systems were built for. That is what we had capacity for when the systems were set up. And so the proposal before you tonight is to reduce the impervious cover allowances in P5, P4, and P3. P2 will stay the same, because it is already at 40%. P5 would go from 60 to 50, P4 from 70 to 60, and P5 from 80 to 65.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Okay. Oh, Councilperson Lee, go ahead.
I have one. When I was looking, like, what are the pros and cons? Some of the cons were overcrowding traffic issues, loss of character, and parking challenges. Do you see, or can you explain why those would be cons?
Cons of what? Of lowering impervious cover?
Some of the cons to lowering the impervious cover that I found were overcrowding traffic issues, loss of character, parking challenges.
That may... Did you research that, or did it list...
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I couldn't see why those would be cons, so I was wondering...
Those sounds like increasing impervious cover, because loss of character would be because you're adding more concrete, more something else. That would be increasing impervious cover. The cons for decreasing impervious cover, as we will hear our developer friends say, is that you're taking away the value of their property, because there's less buildable area to their property.
Which would be the loss of character. Why would they say parking would be a cons?
Well, and it could be parking from the other direction, as if my impervious cover limit is so low, I'm not going to put a high number of parking spaces in.
With all the parking we've discussed tonight, you don't see...
No, because I want... I want us to be able to also give credits. I want us to do alternative parking methods. I want us to do alternative parking materials with semi-pervious stuff. I want us to do strips of concrete with grass in between, because it's not just about flooding, it's also about water quality. Motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a public comment, public hearing on this one, so... So let's open said public hearing. Pablo Serna? Do you still live on Hill Street?
Yeah, I think this is my last comment. So, he'll see the last of me. Impervious cover limits, I was just punching up some numbers there. I think the intent of the B-3 code is... There's some diagrams in there, they're called the transect. As you get closer to the core, P5, the density is beneficial. A lot of the... I think what's going to happen, a lot of Bastrop is P3, especially at 50%. If you have a small lot, that's going to be severe. And I think what I want to say is, at some point, and this may have to come back, need to look at small lot standards and large lot standards, because this will penalize smaller lots. They're going to not have enough to do hardly anything. So I think that's something I just want to point out. I'm actually in support of reducing the impervious cover. I just think that we need to come back and revisit small lot sizes versus large lot sizes, especially because there's a variety of lot sizes in the Iredal district, and we're just trying to think about how they can, you know, if they want to do some things. And they have a 5,000-square-foot, or 5,400, 5,445, that's eight units, eight dwellings per acre. If we do .50, that's 2,722 square feet to do a house, to do any kind of parking, and driveways and sidewalks and deck, anything that causes problems. I'm just saying that that's a tight, tight fit. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from... City Man... Well, she's not the public. Well, okay.
We're comedic now, Tim. We're getting so tired, we're delirium.
Let's close the public hearing. Madam City Manager?
And a good meet-in-the-middle is the... In the Iredal district, for example, there's a lot of homes that are built on pier and beams that do have the flow-through, the decks that are, you know, with the nail in between the deck boards that does allow the flow-through, the water capture. I think there's a lot of positives that we can gain. And if we did give a... What, Pablo, if you know off the top of your head, Austin's minimum lot size is 1,800 square feet. 1,800 square feet, y'all. 1,800 square feet. What is the impervious cover ratio for an 1,800-square-foot lot?
45.
45?
So they... Well, I should say that they have two lot sizes. They have a small lot and a large lot. And they're... They have a lot of... Because their land, they're more Euclidean, so they have... They don't really have place types. So they have maybe like, I wouldn't say maybe 10 or 12 residential, single-family-type lots. And I think that's kind of what's happening. We're gonna... I'm just saying that if we just go holistically and say 50% P3, which makes a lot of sense if you have a big lot. It's a small lot, so it's going to be penalized. And I think what we want to provide is some. So I'm just saying, I'm in support of reducing, yes. I think that it would be good if you send something back to P&amp;Z and say, hey, let's look at large lot, small lot sizes down the road.
Councilperson Foster.
Yes, my question for this impervious cover that we're considering reduction, is this one of those things where if there's precedent, like if you drop a pin and there's someone doing around it? Like, is there relief for the impervious cover ratio?
That's a good point. When we provided relief in the rest of the code, this would qualify for relief also, unless you exempted it from relief.
So far, everything we've passed, everything in our code is eligible for that relief.
And that relief comes to existing property owners. So, for example, Mr. Serna, dropping a pin 200 feet, whatever that average is, he's able to do that. If that average is higher than 50%, so long as the other condition that he's not increasing more than 51%.
Sure, so when you say current...
It's always a math problem.
But current owners, what do you mean, for potential buyers or something? Is that what you're saying?
So, yes, well, potential buyers, owners, if an existing structure is today, and pick any address, we drop a pin, remember we said if everybody within 200 feet is doing that same thing, you want to match the character?
Not just everybody, anybody. It just has to be one other property, right?
You want to... Well, no, it's the average.
Oh, it's the average, okay.
It's the average. We gave relief in another section of the code for that, for setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. Build two lines, because you do want to match the character of the neighborhood. You do want to match the character of the neighborhood. And there are neighborhoods that are built a little bit differently. There are some sections of Main Street that have underground drainage. There are other sections that do not, and the sections, if you pay attention as you're driving down, the larger sections that do not have underground drainage, that have surface drainage, that's where you'll find also the larger lots. There's a method to the madness of planning that happened 20, 50, 60 years ago on what the infrastructure and the built-to environment was.
So is this one we want to consider exempting from that? Like, I know we feel... I don't know, just an idea.
In my opinion, yes, if it's matching the built environment, i.e., I have a... In Mr. Serna's case, his neighbor's one acre, but everybody around him is less than one acre, and their impervious cover limits are blank. You know, short of us having a supercritical drainage issue at that particular intersection, or that block, or that 200-foot radius, I don't see why this wouldn't qualify also. The goal is to not overburden existing property owners. I'm not trying to put a rule in place that's going to not allow people to do certain things in their homes. I just want us to be cognizant of the downstream effect.
Yeah, I also feel like this is kind of the magic ratio that helps alleviate a lot of things, so I don't want to give tons of relief to it.
Well, we have completed our public hearing. Talked about it, asked questions. Is there a motion on the table?
I'm just going to say a piece. I was asking, getting clarification from Kennedy, is that what's being voted on? Because I have online the build-to line being struck out as well.
That... No, that is not. That was in there by error.
Move to approve.
What you're voting on tonight is just what's on the screen.
We have a motion and a second from Councilperson Plunkett and Meyer. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We've already done 11D, so now we are on 11E. Discussion and possible action on applications received for the Bastrop County Advisory Board of Health.
Mayor and Council, at the dais, you received the applications. Let me go to the... Colin, will you jump to that item?
Here they are.
Yes, there you go. What slide number was that on? We're in the hundreds of slides. What slide number are those names on, Colin? 105, got it. Okay, the applications for individual consideration that were submitted by the deadline of the 10th midnight, David Cruz, Dr. Gupta, Melanie Smith, and Heather Stone. For the public certification, the Bastrop County Advisory Board of Health was seeking qualified applicants in the field of health to assist the advisory board furthering the initiatives of Bastrop County. Each municipality was asked to receive applications and recommend an appointment to the Bastrop County Advisory Board. The listed applicants, their member applications are up on the screen if you want to go through those one by one, or if you've had any opportunity to review these. There is a rubric that is also included, and the rubric includes the most recent employer duties and responsibilities. And again, these all relate to health or health-related. Any credentials or degrees, that's worth 15 points. If you're a Bastrop County resident, that's worth five points. If they're available to attend monthly in-person meetings, that's available, 15 points. The area of expertise in public health, professional healthcare representatives, medical or allied health providers, health policy, that's worth 10 points. Training specific or education to, specific to infectious disease, chronic disease, environmental health, health promotion, education, access to care, navigation, coordination, or advocacy, that's worth 10 points. Tell us why you wish to be a board member and contribute to, that's worth 20 points. Ever been elected to an appointed board or currently serving, that's worth 10 points. And names of two references is worth five points, for a total of 100 points. So we are prepared to take tiki notes on the screen for the folks at home to understand who they're voting for, and/or if we've run out of time, or you don't feel like you've had enough time, we can always call a special meeting to review these.
So my thinking is that we also have one of our rules of procedure that says we're supposed to be done in 18 minutes. We've had a lot of discussion on items tonight that was necessary. I don't know that we should spend the next 20 minutes reading through these and scoring them. That's not the good use of everybody's time, even the public, so... Can we put it... No, we can't put it on Friday's agenda.
We cannot put it for Friday's agenda, we can call a special.
What's our timeframe?
They need to be submitted by the 24th.
That's 10 days from now.
We meet again on the 28th.
Yeah.
Call a special meeting, right?
Yes.
Let's do that. Yeah. So move to table.
Okay, second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilperson Plunkett? How would you feel about a motion to amend the rule?
Yes, let's do that thing where we do the voice vote. I move.
Second.
Councilperson Plunkett has moved that we take the votes for the remainder of the meeting by voice vote. meeting by voice vote, and Councilperson Meyer has seconded that. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous voice votes. Item 11F, consider an act to approve the first reading of ordinance 2501 of the city council amending the code of ordinances related to chapter 12 titled Traffic and Vehicles, article 1205 titled Speed Limits, amending section 12506 titled State Highway 21 Frontage Road Speed Limits, and so on.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I actually would like to request this item be removed. I was just informed by our chief that some of the items, some of the information might not be correct.
Move to remove?
Thank you.
We'll just, we'll just remove it, get it.
Thank you.
Another time, fine. Okay, 11G is a postponed item from a prior meeting. Conduct a public hearing, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance 2444 approving the zoning change for 10.56 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey abstract 98 located west of Farm Road 969 in the city of Bastrop from P2 rural to P5 core, and so on.
Good evening again, thank you. So this is an item that was at the last council meeting that got postponed due to an impervious cover discussion. Since then, discussions have had with the property owner and the developer, and they have come to a couple of things that they'd be willing to do. I do have them here, if they would like to come up, please. And they can... Sorry. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name is Merza Big, and I'm a civil engineer representing the developer on this, yeah.
And so at the last council meeting, discussions were had about the impervious cover, since they are being reduced to 65 percent for P5. They are requesting rezoned to P5, that was a discussion that was had at last council meeting.
Yeah, we postponed this one because we knew that we were going to lower the impervious cover for P5, and I didn't want to create a 80 percent P5 and then lower it, and then have this brand-new development, then creating the situation where there's flooding for the neighbors. It's how we, it's how we got to here today. Are there any questions by council on this item?
What is the proposed impervious cover now, Kennedy?
Right now, we have 21 percent, and we're planning to go 80 or 75 percent impervious cover. That's our development request. And regarding the flooding, we can clarify that thing, that we're providing a detention pond based on Atlas 14, which is like a 500-year detention pond, so it's not going to have an issue with the flooding like you have in the past development, which only designed for 100-year floodplain.
So the request is to go to an 80 percent impervious cover, and to mitigate any flooding or drainage, you're improving the pond from a 100-year to a 500-year?
Yeah, basically, the, all the development we do in Austin and other areas, we design based on Atlas 14, which is 500-year floodplain, and we are willing to increase 10 percent more, the volume of the pond, if the city council can allow us 80 percent impervious cover.
Sylvia, the Atlas 14, or the 500-year flood, is that consistent with how our rules work as well? Like, for instance, you know, he's, he's got to put in the, the drainage pond, but increasing the volume by 10 percent, yeah, does this, does this make sense to you?
Yes, so what Atlas 14 did is essentially move the 500-year to the 100-year.
Okay.
And it, because it takes into account rainfall and rain events that have happened. The, the question is for the attorney on the vesting of the project's submittal, would he have been vested to the 80 percent number?
The discussion last time with the prior city attorney was that because this was rezoning, and we're basically, we can set it here at the dais, vote on it, and then whatever we approve is the zoning, was the discussion last time. Is that consistent with your understanding as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, Councilperson Plunkett?
So, I'd say, so if, if you're satisfied that the additional retention, or detention, in this case, accomplishes the same thing that the, the extra 15 percent of pervious cover would have given us, then I'd be prepared to move to approve.
I would say subject to, we have not run all of the engineering traps, and I hope my engineers are in the back, that while it makes sense mathematically, and it looks like the numbers are going to work, we still have to run some, a little bit more detailed calculations, but I don't have any concerns that through the permitting process, if the ponds needed to be deepened, widened, et cetera, that it wouldn't be a possibility. I have plenty of area to do that.
This one has a second reading attached to it as well. Okay, so we have a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any comments on this item? No, we don't? Okay, and then I will close said public hearing, and... Councilperson Plunkett?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second? Oh, then, so, all in favor? Okay. The ayes have it unanimously. Okay, item 11H, consider an act to approve the first reading of ordinance 2505 amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025 in accordance with existing statutory requirements.
We have a few budget amendments for some items. The first one is some insurance claims for hail damage on the building, on the roof, and vehicles. It is, I'm sorry, it is going to, it is covered by insurance proceeds that we received last year and in the current year. The next one, oh, they're all on this one, I'm getting ahead of myself. The street maintenance fund is, or dev services, I'm sorry, it says street maintenance, but it's development services fund, is funding a remodel with some unused revenue from the current year budget. We're also, I'm also including an animal control vehicle for dev services with their unused verf balance. And then we've got two entries, or two budget amendments for some land purchases for wastewater treatment plant that were in deliberation. Is that the right word? And these were, have previously been approved by council. And then the last one is for the expenditures related to the CO series fiscal, for fiscal year 24, the issuance that we had at the very, very end of last fiscal year.
Councilperson Plunkett, your light is on.
Sorry, move to approve.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Who is the second?
Councilperson Meyer. And Plunkett was the first. So council, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, thank you very much. We're going to skip 11I as a moot issue. We're also skipping 11M, so we have three more on here. 11J, consider an act on resolution R2508 appointing Karen Kincaid Brady, Executive Director of the Bastrop Museum and Visitor Center, to place seven of the Cultural Arts Commission for a three-year term. And this is a, a standard seat on the Cultural Arts Commission, and so this is naming the new director of the museum to that seat.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilperson Meyer, and a second from Councilperson Lee, and Councilperson Fosser, do you have a comment or question?
She starts on Thursday, we're very excited.
Excellent, 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 excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it unanimously. 11K, consider an act on resolution R2505 approving a public improvement plan agreement with Bass, with PRC01 Bastrop LLC for Cendaro as attached to exhibit A. You don't look like Ms. Higgins.
No, I'm going to give her a break, she's had quite a night.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, council. Talking about Pearl River, Cendaro, they currently have approved plans, public improvement plan's been approved, water, that includes water, wastewater, storm, and streets. Final drainage plan has the drainage pond and the stormwater design. Tree mitigation was addressed in a separate agreement, it won't, it's not in this, but some of the, the way moat way and has been designed, and the public improvement does consider some tree replanning, but the actual mitigation is addressed in a separate agreement that's already been to council. PIPA calculates the inspection fees owed, and the quantities and amount needed to post performance bond. Asking for you to approve, here's where Cendaro is, their plat, and we're asking for you to approve their public improvement plan agreement. Any questions?
Oh, I had a question.
She had her light on first. Councilperson Fosser?
Do you have access to the packet?
Yes.
Okay, can you check page 320, please? I just had a, page 320, 321.
Okay.
Okay, check out that section 2.5. That number, the 1.2 million, the street sidewalks and erosion control improvements, I couldn't, I couldn't come to that number from the previous page where it talked about street sidewalks and erosion control. Can you just help me figure out that math and make sure that column's right? Everything else refers to the page previously, but that one...
204, 1...
2, 5. Street sidewalks and erosion control items on the page 5 are, it's 240.
Correct.
Storm, drainage.
And on the next page, it's 1.2 million. I just want to make sure that's like, if it's pulling in from something else.
2, 4.
Double-checking math here.
Yeah, that should be...
Should be the 240.
Should be the 240.
We'll double-check that number.
Does that change what we're talking about tonight?
So, no, so, well, no, the, the, this total infrastructure development cost amount is what their bond is based off of, so we get those costs, those costs and quantities, and I'm going to go back to their backup document they provided, make sure, verify those dollar amounts, and then the, the bond that they submit to us will be based on dollar amounts, so we'll, we'll amend that and approve that based off of that.
The fact that it's higher is a good thing. If it was lower, that would be a bad thing.
Yeah, it's just going to effectively increase the bond that they have, and they have to build it regardless, so.
Yeah. The number that we're more worried about is the, the payment to the city down on the bottom of page 321.
Councilperson Lee?
I was just wondering why the impact fees are not included on this. Is there a reason, is that a separate?
Separate, yeah, impact fees are collected at building permit, and they'll be a separate document. This is specific to just the public improvements, the water, wastewater, just what they're installing and what we're accepting.
Have we seen the impact fees?
It depends on their building, so we have...
No, I mean, council, have we seen total cost on the impact fees?
So we haven't calculated the impact fees yet because we are currently looking to update the impact fees. The impact fees will be vested at the time of final plat, so we're waiting to see kind of a timing situation as to, is the final plat going to be approved by P and Z before we update the impact fees, or is it going to be approved after we update the impact fees? So we're waiting to see how that timeline plays out. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, oh, yeah, I forgot. Thank you. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilperson Plunkett and Councilperson Meyer, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous ayes have it. 11L, consider an act on resolution 202510 in support of employee Kennedy Higgins emitted from resolution 2024-179 adopted on December 10, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous ayes have it again. This is Councilperson Lee, and who had the second? Was that Plunkett? Yes, Councilperson Plunkett, thank you. So, this brings us to item number 12.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Upon completion of our business and our motions, we are now adjourned. 9:59, one minute.